We have some people who would like to lead us in the pledge. Come on up. Michaelina Willis. Jennifer Alley Violet. Rebecca Chandler.
Thank you for being here.
Jay Dutton. Jake Petrie. Ella, not here, okay. This young lady is not here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Would you like to start? You're up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We have minutes. Yeah, I got it, yeah. We have minutes for the last meeting. I have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I was remiss. All school board members are present. Cory is by telecommunications or whatever we call it nowadays. Okay. If you see, ladies and gentlemen, number two, we have an action on non-public, but those minutes are with legal up at the School Board Association, so we will not be moving them tonight.
Just for formatting purposes, no other reason. They're fine.
Okay. Do we have the manifest and all that going around?
Yes.
Okay. I'll sign in a minute. Any resignations, sir?
None.
There's no resignations, nominations?
None.
There are no nominations. Superintendent's report. Well, actually, you know what? I'm gonna hold off on that, sir, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Because I would like to go right after your report into the budget.
Sounds good.
All right. So I want to clean up everything until we get to that. Is that all right with you, ladies and gentlemen?
No.
Okay. Committee reports. Policy.
The policy committee met tonight, and we discussed policy on vape pens, which we're going to continue at our next meeting. We're still waiting for the New Hampshire School Board Association to provide its assessment of our policy manual and potential revisions. We're looking at a few changes to policy GCBB administrator's salary policy, and these are minor changes, but we'll present those as a first reading at our next meeting. And we are discussing a policy regarding memorials and memorialization of those lost in our district, those who have passed away. This is an important policy, and we're going to take our time with it and reach out for comments and recommendations on how that policy should be drafted. We're looking also at a Narcan policy for the college, and that's just in a beginning stage. And our next meeting is January 3rd at 5:00 PM. Any questions?
Discussions? Okay. Do you want a motion on her report, or should we just forward it? There was nothing. There were no changes.
Nothing. There was no action item there, no.
All right. EISA, that's the education.
We haven't met since our last board meeting, and our next meeting is December 20th at 5:00 PM.
Okay. Facilities?
We have not met, sir.
Okay. Finance?
Not, sir.
Okay. Public relations?
We have not met.
Okay. When are we meeting again? Okay, I believe it's September. Never mind. Okay, we know who it is, but I didn't know if... Pardon?
Yeah, to be determined.
Right, okay. Well, I have it in the calendar here. We'll talk about it later, to make sure everybody knows.
Yep.
I thought it was written the 13th at 4:30, but I know we usually meet earlier.
Yeah. I think that was from the old.
Right, right. So we'll talk about it.
Yep.
That's okay. Personnel?
Personnel, we haven't met, but Jim and I were just talking, and we need to schedule a meeting for that. Jim is going to let me know his availability, and we might also try to get together during the day, since the three of us are available.
SST?
Central School of Technology had a meeting on November 20th, 2017. The topic of discussions from FY19 budget. The board's budget that was initially plotted is $3,225,000.
Everybody still here, all right?
This budget represents a 2.7% increase. The cost student is going from the adopted budget of $1,090,000 in October 2015 to that of $2,237. That's a 4.3% increase since October 16th, 2017, 2018.
I wonder if this was a seven?
I just want to let you know that that represents a student population of 62 students as well.
Okay, fine. Oh, that's right. Very right.
Any questions?
Questions? No, we're all set.
Thank you.
Seminary discussions.
We're meeting.
Meeting scheduled for August 7th.
Pam, that's what you were gonna say?
Yeah.
That's okay. Budget?
The budget committee has not met since our last meeting.
We're gonna be talking about this, okay. Okay. Public comment. Any public comment, ladies and gentlemen? Okay. I'm going to move now to student council.
So, right now, student council is in their annual 12 days of hearing, which is happening a little bit different this year.
Could you move the mic a little bit closer to you? I don't know if they can hear.
It started this Monday and will go until December 19th, and we're collecting all throughout the entire time span, hand goods, pet supplies, personal care items, toys, school supplies, and then additionally, letters to soldiers, which we are going to be including with the personal care items to ship overseas. The boxes, there are boxes near the nurses' office inside the school, along with boxes in the breezeway between the outside and the inside of the school. The theater troupe is doing their annual Christmas show next Monday, I believe, and the student council has picked all of their individual winter carnival themes. The overarching theme is back in time. The seniors have picked the early 2000s, the juniors picked the 50s, the sophomores picked the 80s, and the freshmen picked the Jurassic period.
What period?
The Jurassic period.
Oh, God. I have a copy of that that you gave.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Before we start the superintendents, there is one thing that I have. The town of Newton sent a letter to me, as chairman. They would like a joint meeting. They are proposing Monday, January 8th. Some of the things they'd like to discuss is warrant articles, the budget. I would like to know how the board feels about that. It'd be Monday, January 8th. Michael, I'd go to the board.
I'm confused. The town of Newton, I'm...
Last, was it last year? Year before, I think? We went over to Newton, I believe. They said they'd come over here this time.
They came over here for, that was on safety, I think.
Okay. There was another one, I know I went over to Newton, but about once a year, they, the selectmen would like to discuss with us. I don't know why they, one of the things they want to know is it's in here. I'll give you the letter. But, you know, they want to know what budget we're having, what warrant articles we may have. Michelle believes she'll have any warrant articles, and we're gonna be discussing those in the next couple of weeks.
Can't the selectmen who live in Newton come to the school board meetings?
No, that's exactly... I think Phyllis is gonna laugh. That was what I was, that was one of the things I said. Could they come here? And could they come here during a school board meeting, even if we start a little early and had discussion with them? And apparently, that was not doable for them.
But aren't they, aren't selectmen residents of Newton? Like any other resident who can come to a school board meeting or a budget committee meeting?
This is all open for discussion. Absolutely, you're correct on both.
Well, I don't understand why we would hold a special meeting, because I...
They would like to have a joint discussion with us. Perhaps I used the wrong word, "meeting." They, I don't, I don't quite understand it either. They asked for it, we're discussing it, whatever you would like to do.
I don't understand why we would have a special, separate meeting for anybody selectman or anyone.
Well, the letters in our package.
Whoa, 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 no, wait, we've got, we go, one with the hand up, she's still speaking. I'm gonna recognize you in a second. Taryn, are you finished with what you were saying?
I am, I'm confused.
Okay, okay. I request that you read the letter, and that will give clarity, I think.
Okay. Two Sanborn Regional School Board proposed joint meeting with the Sanborn Regional School Board, dear board members. I am writing today on behalf of the Newton Board of Selectmen to propose a joint meeting between our boards. It has been a considerable amount of time since our boards have had the opportunity to meet. I believe the previous joint meetings were very beneficial to the community as a whole. While our respective boards are individual governing bodies, we are all members of a greater community. At town meeting in March, voters will be presented with a separate ballots for the town and school, but most of our voters, I'm sorry, but to most of our voters, the tax implications are one and the same. This meeting would give us the opportunity to share our plans for 2018, or 2018, school, town meeting, and consider how they will fit together. It would give us the opportunity to work together for mutual success. We would like to propose a meeting to be held Monday, January 8th at 6:30 PM at the Newton Town Hall. If this time does not work, we can discuss other options. I believe we did discuss other options, Phyllis, and we decided it was here. Phyllis and I have been working on this for a week or so now, right? So they did agree to come here. Okay. We hope you will accept our invitation. It is our belief that our community could greatly benefit from this type of meeting between our boards. Please contact me if you have any questions. I can be reached by phone, the phone number's here. We look forward to seeing you on January 8th, 2018. Matthew Burrell, Chairman. That's as much as I, that's as much as I know. I mean, Phyllis and I have sent back questions, but the questions didn't seem to come back answered to our satisfaction.
I did ask Phyllis to call and invite the, the selectmen from Newton to one of our board meetings, and I, what was the response, Phyllis? I can't remember the...
They preferred to meet, they didn't want to be rushed in the board meeting. They felt that they would be rushed, and I mentioned that we could certainly not rush them, but they felt that they wanted to meet outside of a board meeting, either here or here, and then they agreed to come here, and that's everything. We're not interested in coming to the board meeting.
I also believe, one of the things I asked you to do was to see if we could perhaps move earlier, so that it would not affect our board meeting as much, because it's really kind of a non-meeting meeting, because it's a joint meeting. So could we start earlier, perhaps, and...
They said, they said no, that 6:30 was the last they could do.
It would be a public meeting, right?
Yes, but we could start like at, you know, 5:30 instead of 6:00, or, you know, something. But it, the answer was no. You know, I mean...
As far as earlier.
As far as earlier goes, right. And as far as what it really is concerned, I asked Phyllis again to find out if they could give us an agenda, and...
They said nothing more specific than...
Than this.
They said propose what we're working on, what they're working on, and any warrant articles, so that they would all, everyone would be aware that it was coming up.
Because I knew I would have to report to you of what they want, and...
That's all.
That's all they said. So you now have, I think, every bit of information we have. What would you like to do?
I don't have any problem with us getting together with the Board of Selectmen. You know, they've, I mean, if they want to know what we have planned, and might be, might be helpful to know what they have planned, and just have an exchange, and could be 20 minutes long, or it could be an hour long, who knows?
I guess my feeling is, everything we have done, up to this point and tonight, is all open for them to either come or see on TV. They will know what our budget is, going to the budget committee tonight. They will know what our warrant articles are in a couple of weeks when we have that meeting discussing them. So I'm not sure how productive it will be, because the information's gonna be given to them anyway.
I think it's a collegial kind of, just cooperative kind of a thing, it sounds to me from...
Yep, that has, that has validity. Any other discussion?
Is there any reason why we would not want to meet with them and, you know, have a sharing of information?
No.
I have no problem with this either.
Yeah, no.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's an additional meeting. I think our meetings are public. I think their meetings are public. I'm, I have to say, I'm, in your, that's why I said I'm confused, like...
Okay, well, wait a second, Cory. I see your hand, I'll get you in a second.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, maybe everyone likes to have lots of meetings. I have to say, like, we have plenty of meetings and jobs and everything else, and I'm, I think if there's confusion about what we're presenting for the budget and the warrant articles, then we probably haven't done a very good job at these meetings, if there's any confusion at that point. And then, I feel like, well, then, to me, it's, are we then gonna have the Kings, a separate Kingston Selectmen meeting, and then are we gonna have a joint Fremont Selectmen meeting, and now we have twice as many meetings? I'm...
No, I, I...
I'm perplexed.
Both sides have validity. Cory?
I agree.
Cory, you're breaking up, unfortunately.
Okay. I, I, I agree with you, Karen. Will we have three additional meetings, or two or three additional meetings relative to Fremont, Kingston as well? Speaking from Stonestreet sidelines once, as I was going to be re-elected, I remember it would have been nice, as the fire department was voted down by a minor amount of votes, because there was a lot of other things that were on the jet. Ultimately, I think this is a thoughtful discussion to have with them, and what are they looking to do, any major tax impacts?
You're breaking up, Cory, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
I don't think he's breaking up, I think he's pausing.
Wow, okay. Here we go. Yep.
Okay. So, so, Karen, in other words, I agree, it's another meeting, but the truth matters, we're also dutyary agents of the community, and probably that we want to understand their responsibility, their, their goals, and where they, I don't see the monies go to. We have a luxury of a city, or a city actually has a front public committee, the public statement, and everything. It's a much different agency here, and because it's a different agency, they're asking us directly what we're looking to do, because the highest percentage of the taxpayer, what the tax rate against the community is going to schools. So I, I respect what they're trying, their conversation, if they had a city council, and the city council had a budget committee that was separate, that was evaluating all the things, all town manager, and all organizations of rings of order. I support it, I agree with all of your concerns and questions. I highly suggest that we piggyback it with another board meeting, if possible.
Okay, thank you. That was actually gonna be what I suggested. We, we meet between these, the meetings with Fremont, you had a meeting tonight, I think there were two committee meetings tonight, prior to these meetings. We're gonna be meeting in public relations, and I think we have a finance meeting coming up next week also. So we're running, just the school board, we're running two to three meetings, and I gotta tell you, I'm gonna get a little personal here. We spent four hours together upstairs. We spent probably four hours together during the week, plus phone calls. So, I tell you, I am meeting doubt. I would, I'm gonna suggest, and you vote on it, but I'm gonna tell you how I feel, and that is, be more than happy to meet you Wednesday night, an hour or so before our posted meeting. That'd be great, but I'm looking at just the school board, two to three meetings a week, plus when he calls me at home. So, what's your feeling, ladies and gentlemen? Can I have a, perhaps a thumbs up? I don't know, it has to be a motion?
I think that's reasonable.
Okay, well, no, let's make a motion, because we've got two or three things here. I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we meet with the Newton Selectmen per their request at a time that's convenient for, for us.
Second.
Well, what is the time convenient? We gotta, because we're saying, I'm saying Wednesday.
It's just like anything else, you work it out.
Well, we try, I would agree with you, if this is time for discussion, but Phyllis and I tried to work it out with them, right, Phyllis? We asked them if we could have it Wednesday, we asked them if we, and they, for whatever reasons, it was, no, we can't do that then.
The time that's convenient to all, to all of us.
Well, that's what we tried. We already tried, we went down that road, and the answer coming back was no, Monday the 8th.
Well, that's...
Phyllis is not...
It says in the letter, they have...
On Monday.
Says in the letter that they're open to other options.
Okay. How about we go the 10th at 5:00? That, that, that's our recommendation.
Can we just leave the motion open?
Yeah, I don't see why you have to...
Arrange a time with them that works for all of us.
I think what he's saying is they tried to arrange a time.
Well, they, they...
We tried to arrange a time that was convenient for us, but we need to work with them and find a time that's convenient for them and us. If it has to be on a Monday night, I honestly don't see, what is the problem with one Monday night going and meeting with the Newton Selectmen? I, I really don't see why that's a problem.
Okay, well, I'm not available on Monday.
I accept, I accept your, I accept your argument. So what is the problem with them meeting on the 10th?
Well, they've already said that doesn't work for them.
Well, Monday doesn't work for me, because I have other commitments that night.
Well, maybe we can ask for them for a Tuesday, then. I mean...
What I'm suggesting is, we give a proposal, we give a proposal of the 10th, and then they, they get back to us. It's negotiations, folks. They gave a proposal, all right? Now we're giving a counterproposal. It's, it's a form of negotiations.
This isn't a real estate deal. We're, we're talking about a Board of Selectmen from a town that wants to meet with us.
And I'm saying glad to.
First of all, we should either agree that we're gonna meet with them or not agree with, that we're gonna meet with them. We don't want to set a date that people can't meet, that's not even good faith. We want to either decide we're gonna meet with them or we're not gonna meet with them, and then leave a date that's open.
That's what I was gonna say, but we've got someone with her, with her hand up, and we want her to put in her...
That if you retract yours, I'll make a motion that says...
Well, can we hold on, Larry? Because I really haven't recognized you, because she had her hand up before you.
Okay.
I'm just curious, have they offered any other times that would work with, with them? Or are they very, been, we can meet at this time, and no other times? Because it sounds like we're trying to cooperate with them, and they have not done so.
Would you say that's a good, you would have made the phone call, and I know directly, we asked for other dates, and they stayed with the 8th, that was the only day that...
One question we asked is, could they come to a board meeting? And I offered our board, they know our board meetings.
Right.
And they said they preferred not to do that, and they would like to still meet on the 8th, if possible.
Yeah. So, so I think your answer is, we did make those offers, and it felt to no. All right. Larry, I said I'd recognize Larry next.
If you retract your motion, what I'll do is, I'll make a motion where we read the time and the date off. Well, that won't work either.
That's, that's what I was thinking.
That was my motion. Never mind, I'll retract mine.
Well, I stopped Pam's hand first.
So, we've had joint meetings with Fremont, and not everyone's been able to...
We had a joint meeting with Fremont School Board.
School Board, correct. And we, not everyone's been available for those joint meetings over at Fremont, and we've had a representation from the board there. It sounds like Tammy, Jim, maybe Cory and I could go to the meeting on the 8th, but... Well, that would be everybody from Newton going to the Newton meetings, but not sure that's...
Well, how about you, Larry? Well, the superintendent has already said he would go. Right? We've already discussed this with him.
As far as I know right now, my schedule is full for that date. That date and two.
So, the only people going would be the Newton residents and the at-large person.
I'd like to...
Is that quorum?
That would be a quorum.
So, it's not?
I think we should give them the courtesy...
Oh, wait, wait a minute, excuse me, Cory. If Larry doesn't go, and it's only Jim, Tammy, and Pam...
That is not a quorum.
That is not a quorum. Oh, you? Okay.
That's full.
That would be a quorum.
I think we should give them a courtesy of agreeing to meet with them, but we have to have a time that's mutually agreeable, and that's something, if we can't work it out, we can't work it out.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Well, do you want to give a couple of eight in time?
No. No, just decide whether we're gonna meet with them, agree to it, and then...
I think how you put it was exactly right.
Yeah, if we can't get together, if we can't come up with a mutually agreeable time, we don't meet.
Okay, okay, that's fine. So you want to make that a motion?
I just, I made it already.
Okay.
That we, that we agreed to meet with the Newton Selectmen at all of our convenience.
Okay.
And it's the time that was convenient for everyone.
Right.
Because you're gonna be making...
A date, date and a time.
Phyllis, you'll probably be making the call, so you got it all right? Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Where am I here? All right. So, we've gone through that. Okay, looks like the superintendent is up.
Okay. Had some nice information to share on this.
One second, does everybody have a copy of this?
I'm not there yet. I do have copies for everyone.
Okay, all right.
I'll hand them over.
Good teacher, give them out when it's time.
That's right, because I'd like them to listen to what I'm saying first. All right, so, I just wanted to tell everyone that I was very impressed when I received an email from Principal Stack about a survey that the high school proactively did to find out how they're doing as a high school. On, in November of 2017, the school administrators at Sanborn Regional High School asked the community to respond to two questions. What does our school do well, and what could our school do to be better? Over a period of nine days, 86 individuals responded to the survey, identifying themselves as students, parents, guardians, or community members. So in the feedback that was given, Mr. Stack provided me with a summary, and the top three things that the school does well is that the school communicates often. By far, the single most positive feedback the school received was for its communication with the community. Survey respondents appreciated both the depth of information, as well as the multiple forms of communication, and the top two most used forms of communication noted were the Points of Pride Weekly Newsletter and the Automated Phone System. The second point that was noted as things that the school does well is that the school engages students, parents, and the community. Survey respondents appreciated the level to which our school goes to engage different groups of people, both in and out of the classroom. Many people commented on the high level of school spirit, and also the variety of programs, clubs, and activities available to students and families. The third point that was an item that the school does very well is that the school provides equity to all students. They received quite a bit of feedback on equity, the steps the school has taken to include all students and provide them with personalized, individualized pathways to success. pathways to success. So there are three things also that the school could do better based on the survey feedback. Look for better ways to address student discipline was the first one. Many survey respondents thought the school should look for better ways to address student misbehavior in a fair and consistent manner. It was noted that bullying situations in particular can be a problem for some students. The second was that they're looking for better ways to communicate on certain things. So communication was considered an area of strength for many, but it also came up as an area of improvement. Specifically, survey respondents had two suggestions. First, parents and students would like to see more communication on academics and grades, and community members who do not have children in the school would like to see more news in the Carriagertown News. So that's a good feedback to listen to. The third item that the school could do better is work with teachers on improved instructional techniques and developing relationships with students. We received quite a bit of feedback on our teachers and that feedback seemed to suggest that our staff as a whole could benefit from increased professional development on instructional strategies that could increase student engagement and achievement to training on how to strengthen relationships with students. So I just wanted to remind everyone that my work with Dr. Green's organization, Lives in the Balance, we did send a number of staff members to a conference in November, I'm sorry, early October, about this very topic. And throughout the next year, as part of my plans for working with the district, working with Dr. Green's organization would be a very positive way to start working on that third step. I'm very excited to see how that plays out. The staff who attended the training were very, very positive about the message and the methodology that was being presented. Next step, school administrators appreciate the individuals who took the time to offer feedback on what the school does well and what we could focus on to improve. In the coming weeks and months, there will be additional communication from the team as they work with staff to take action on the items noted above. So I just wanted to note that this is the kind of wide-open survey and reflectiveness that I view as being very positive as we start to plan professional development. So we're getting feedback, we're looking at our practices, then we make plans to make improvements, and that's exactly what I'd like to see as a superintendent. So I think it's also important to note that the Kingston Fire Department was recognized today for their community partnership with the Sanborn Regional High School Career Pathways Program. It's pretty exciting. They received an award for their relationship with the students. Mr. Stack attended that event. And we have some holiday concerts coming up. The Sanborn Regional School District is going to be having the 6th grade band, combined 7th and 8th grade band in the high school on Wednesday, December 13th, on Thursday, December 14th at the auditorium, the Bakersfield Memorial Elementary Bands, and on December 19th at the auditorium, the Middle School Chorus and the High School Chorus, and there might be a special guest bass player on that concert.
Bass what? Bass drum? Bass?
Bass drum.
Yeah, no, come on now, tell them. They may not know.
The bass violin, yes. I will be performing with the chorus for at least one number on December 19th. I'm very much looking forward to spending some time with the kids. Yeah, on the upright bass like this. Yep. Thanks Pete. So we had two students selected for the New Hampshire Music Allstate Festival, John Putnam and Aaron Gillespie. This is really exciting. It's a student from... John is a sophomore from Newton. He was accepted into the New Hampshire Allstate Band as a trombonist. I don't know if anyone here has ever played the trombone, but that's a very difficult instrument to play. And Aaron Gillespie, a sophomore from Kingston, was accepted into the Allstate Trouble Chorus as a soprano. I do think it's important to note that Mr. Stack worked really hard to allocate some resources to offer students additional support for their aspirations to be a part of the New Hampshire Allstate, and it paid off. We're really happy about this. Both students took part in the statewide audition on November 18th at Manchester Memorial High School. They prepared excerpts and auditioned, and they made it in, so it's really exciting. The Allstate Festival is in Concord on April 12th and 14th, 12th through the 14th, just so folks would know when that event is. At the Memorial Elementary School, they recognized 37 students with CARES awards in November. Students were selected by teachers for demonstrating the attributes of cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control and regulation. Families at the Memorial Elementary School are celebrating the upcoming holidays by sponsoring local families in need. The families and staff select an ornament from the Giving Tree and purchase an item for a family member for distribution in time for the holidays. The Memorial Student Council is holding a food drive for the local community that takes place through December 18th. At the Bakersfield School, there's all kinds of great things going on at the Bakersfield School. The Bakersfield Boosters just completed the Fall Book Fair and it was a success. It's always a pleasure to see the students excited about new books and to hear about the new things they are reading. Several staff, students, and parents were on-site to share a variety of hobbies, and it's an excellent way for... or an excellent event that provides individuals with the opportunity to showcase their individual talents and abilities. The Bakersfield 3rd grade students recently experienced a tech exploration... I love that. I think that's great. Tech exploration assembly about weather, and then they built magnetic levitation cars as part of their science curriculum. In the coming weeks, they'll also meet WMUR meteorologist Kevin Scapura. And finally, our staff and students are excited to host the senior luncheon on Monday, December 11th. Last and not least, our resource officer at the high school, Officer Rick, was selected as Teacher of the Month by which news station, Mr. Stack?
WZID.
Ah, thank you, WZID. So it was really fun. They came in during the cafeteria, surprised him, gave him an award. He was totally blown away. It was great. His family showed up. It was a really fun, fun lunch. So that concludes the superintendent's report for today.
Okay.
We missed one of them.
Questions?
We missed one of them. The middle school performance of a Christmas carol is Friday and Saturday. It is open to the public, and seniors who attended the senior luncheon hosted at the high school got a free ticket to go, and that is open to the public. And all of the holiday concerts that Mr. Ambrose mentioned are open to the public.
Thank you.
Okay. Budget deliberation.
Alright, so...
You want me to set them up with how this is going to work?
Sure, if you'd like to, that'd be fine. I can share this after.
Alright, we had a number... We had discussions today. Mr. Ambrose is going to present, as he was instructed to present, four items. I believe they were page 47. In meeting with the leadership team, the leadership team came up with two other things that are important. As we know, Mr. Ambrose is comfortable with the budget number that he gave, but we also charged him with other things that we thought he... that he thought were important, and to present those to us tonight. In discussing those with the leadership team, they did add two things they feel are important, right? But as Mr. Ambrose has said a number of times, the original budget that he had, you'll be getting a handout in a second. So he's gonna present that. After finishes that, we have discussed how, what the process is for us to discuss it. And once he finishes that, I have kind of a little blurb to say how we will then start moving on the budget as a board. Alright, so he'll be up now and then we'll go into the other thing.
Thank you Chairman. I wanted to mention before I hand this out that the administrative team, we met the other day, and I just wanted to take one more moment to acknowledge that the work that we've done wouldn't happen without their hard work. So the team has worked incredibly hard, many, many, many hours to answer many questions and try to support everyone with understanding the complex nature of school finance while balancing that with the impact on the taxpayers. So...
One second, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Cory, are you there?
I'm here, I'm listening.
Okay, we can't see your face, that's why I didn't know if we had lost the connection. But you are there. Okay.
Thank you.
You're gonna have to just kind of interrupt us and then I'll recognize you because I know I told you today, if you raise your hand, I'll see you, but I can't see you right now. Hold on one second, maybe I will in a minute.
Get him on the big screen.
Well, yes, but that means I have to turn around and turn around and I have to see him and then the other six, and that's why they set this up for me, but I still don't see him.
Yeah, if someone could help with that, that'd be fantastic.
Alright, okay. Alright, we'll get you in a second Cory. Sorry about that, ladies and gentlemen, but for me to turn around and see that he wants to speak is difficult for me with everybody else. Okay, sorry about that.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm...
Every time I get on a roll, he stops me. So anyway, I've got a document here that outlines some things that, that, you know, if the board wanted to consider adding anything to the budget. It's just important to recognize that early on in this process, you know, it's interesting being a new superintendent, starting July 1st and then working on a budget starting September 10th or whatever it was, the 20th. It's kind of tricky to do because you really don't know everyone in the organization. The board asked us to present, what would it be for a 2% increase? What would it be for a 2% decrease? And what items do you feel you need to start moving the district forward? And frankly, I've only... I feel like this, I need more time meeting with teachers to understand their needs and concerns before I can really deeply analyze the next step. Having said that, you know, we presented that there was a... To basically fund the budget flat from year to year, the amount was $34,934. I'm sorry, $34,934. And then we gave a list of six things that we felt would be important to consider if the board should choose to add money back. I just wanted to note when I give this to you that there's also, you know, we need to talk about the NASDAQ study because that would need to be discussed at some point, and then there were the technology switches that were out there in the ether. I think that we found some ways to take care of those things, but we just wanted to give you an update on them as part of this process. So I'll hand this document out and then I'll explain a couple of things for you. The first item is the teaching positions. You know, we put forward a reduction of 8.5 teaching positions, and we do feel that we could function with that level. The administrative team felt strongly that six to six and a half positions reduced would be much more comfortable. The second is that we really recognize the need for substitute teachers, and one strategy that we wanted to try prior to hiring full-time substitutes that are part of our staff because it's more expensive, we wanted to try increasing the hourly rate for substitutes to see if that made a better draw. It's a less expensive option. Third is the supplies for the Bakersfield Memorial Schools. Bakersfield Memorial Schools have a smaller supply budget than any other supply budget in the district, and the percentage that they reduced was significant compared to the other reductions. So the team, the whole administrative team discussed this and agreed that that would be something to consider. We originally wanted to add $100,000 for professional development, and we felt that we couldn't, given the requested amounts by the board for us to consider. So, you know, if we could raise that back to the $100,000, that would be excellent. The sports, there were a variety of sports teams that are not currently being funded or are... would be a feeder program. We had quite a bit of discussion about this. You'll notice that ice hockey is not on there because it had been voted down as a warrant article, but it is something that will probably come back up as a warrant article because it... The program... Vicki feels strongly that the program should be supported, so I suggested to her that if the parents felt that way, that they would want to bring it back to warrant. That folks here had made it pretty clear that it had already been decided by the voters. So that is not on this list, but we did, we did put some activities because we feel that after-school engagement is important to connect kids to school and to the adults in the buildings. Administrative support for the Curriculum Director and Business Administrator, we really struggled with this because it's not, it's not easy to say that we need to reduce some teachers, but we need to add support for some of our professionals, but the reality is that there's a lot being asked of them that is detracting from what they really could be doing to move the district forward academically and financially. We've discussed this at length, so I won't go into details. The NASDAQ study is something that the board would need to decide if they wanted to fund. We could probably fund that along with technology switches. There is some accounts that we have some room in and might be able to talk about funding sooner than later. I personally don't know if we should wait until the next budget cycle to start the NASDAQ study. I'd like to explore whether or not we could start it sooner, but I think that's up for discussion as a group. And please remember that the NASDAQ study has a component of not just looking at our enrollments, but looking at our facilities and looking at our cost per pupil and helping us to understand, you know, what they would recommend for next steps. And that would certainly, in my mind, work jointly with the Facilities Planning Committee that Mr. Baker had motioned to create, you know, with members from each community to look at our facilities use. So as you can imagine, that's a formidable task. The technology switches have been debated at length here and could be funded from a line that is... Would you like to explain that?
The revolving fund.
Yeah.
It was a facilities use revolving fund, and those funds could be used to support those costs.
Could they also support the NASDAQ study or would that be a separate?
I'm not sure about the NASDAQ study.
Facilities use.
We could explore that. So we're trying to find...
We have to look at the language that established that revolving fund.
I felt like those two things and the climate controls, we don't have the figures in the ROI, the return on investment for the climate controls yet, so we didn't feel like we could add them in the list of things, but I just wanted folks to remember that they are items that are being discussed and would need to be discussed. And that's all I have.
Okay. What we're prepared to do now, and we had some discussion on this, we are not going to discuss a dollar amount now. What I will do, and let me explain it first and then I'll tell you, take the motion. I'll take a motion to discuss the budget and a second, then we'll discuss the budget. That's when we will talk about adding or taking away. We then have the option of, if I'm correct, putting the total amount together and come up with a budget number, or having a motion on each item that you'd like to talk about as an amendment and put the money in. What would you rather? It's up to you. Michelle and I got together and that's what we felt we could offer you. So do you want to have a discussion on something and then a motion to the amendment and vote on that amount and then go to the next one? Or do you want to put them all together and come up with a total at the end? Those are options that I want to present to you. We believe both are legally correct. Does it matter? It's, there's no right or wrong.
Personally, I'd like to discuss them all and then come back to them with motions because it's one picture. It's not individual parts.
Well, okay. Larry's shaking his head, no?
I have a problem with that, and I think the court's with you. When you're talking about a line item in the budget, you talk about changing one value.
I believe you're right.
And if you start talking about all the line items, then you come back, what are you approving? You're not approving anything. You would have to sit there...
I think it has to be done that way. The only reason they say that's how the town does it, and I believe that because it's supposed... You discuss one item at a time and the amount, then you move to the next.
Because you can't sit there and change one line item when you're talking about the whole bunch.
It eliminates confusion too, I think.
You've got one that you do not want to sit there and raise a lord, and then the rest that we want to approve, you end up with.
So, I guess what I was suggesting is that we discuss this page.
Yep.
Because it is a complete picture. It's $341,833.
But each one of...
But then we go back to them, one by one, with a motion. Any more discussion, final discussion, and then yea or nay.
I don't know why we would discuss them all and then go back to them. Why not just go to them?
Just follow one at a time and vote on.
If you vote one at a time, maybe then people will say, "Well, I've already voted in too many things." You're not prioritizing them.
Right, okay. Cory, you've got your hand up. Cory? Cory? Something's wrong. He's got his hand up. And I'm recognizing... Can you hear me?
No.
Okay.
I would like to, I would like to do what Jim suggested and sort of just get a feeling for what everybody feels on these different items before we make up our minds on each one. I mean, we can vote at the end on each one of them if we want to, but I would like to discuss the whole picture first.
I guess I'm wondering...
Wasn't that one of your options that you...
I guess I'm wondering what... No, I'm talking about just a total amount. What I'm saying is we discuss the 2.5 teachers. We have a motion, right? We vote on it, then we move to the next one, then we move to the next one. But when it comes to the final number, we have a final number that Michelle will give us and a percentage. I think I confused you when I gave my explanation. So I'm gonna make a ruling as a chairman. Sorry folks. And that is, I'm willing to accept a motion because I think I confused you. I'd like a motion to discuss the budget.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Yeah, discuss question.
Now, because we're discussing the budget, I would like to have, is there any discussion on the 2.5 teaching position?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we discuss the 2.5 position increase for the...
Teaching positions?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on what you would like on the 2.5 teaching position?
Yes, again.
You're up.
I went into Michelle's office, Mike's office, including the superintendents, and I found that they are essentially not being used to their full capacities because they end up doing all their own clerical work. He files, doing their own...
Excuse me, Larry, I... Maybe I'm confused. Seems like you're talking about the administrative support. We're talking about the, whether we have...
Teachers that we're going to lose?
Yes.
Or teachers that we are hiring?
No, this is the... You want to explain it?
Sure, sure. The, Mr. Broderick, I think, was talking about the 2.5 teaching positions.
Yes.
Those are... We had originally proposed reducing the budget by 8.5 teaching positions.
Right.
And so this first one is the, you know, the administrative team said that they would feel more comfortable if we reduce six teaching positions, so that would therefore be adding back in 2.5 teaching positions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove what I started to say.
I thought you were confused.
Now that I know what page we're on.
Okay, we got a point of order for a second. Go ahead.
Can Mr. Mason hear us?
Yes.
No, he can't, and I'm gonna put him on my...
Can you hear us? Larry, I'm Larry.
On my phone. Can you hear us?
Okay.
I'm gonna put him on my phone.
Okay.
Hang on just a sec.
He's really upset.
He is upset.
Okay.
He's upset because he can't hear you.
Okay, I would like to move that the 2.5 teaching position be changed, not reduction, but minus 7.5.
No, okay, no. I think, again, I think we're confused. What you're saying is instead of going from the 8.5, you want to go to the 7, to 7.5?
7.5.
Okay, so...
Alright, we're getting straight here.
Alright. So the motion on the floor is to take the number of 2.5 and move it to 1.5.
So adding back in 1.5.
So add back in 1.5, not 2.5.
Okay.
Alright, I'm sorry for the confusion. I'm sorry for the confusion, fellas, that we all sat on that. Okay, all right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Larry.
We've started off with 8.5.
Okay, I'll fill you in, hold on.
We have dropped it down to four, to six.
I can't hear a thing.
What we're actually looking at is we've got a decrease in enrollment. We've got possibly, from what I, did you find out the number for five years?
We could not find out the number for five years that quickly because our payroll person is no longer available today.
Just by the fact that we have a non-attrition rate, that I think that you're going to find is going to be more than what we're looking at. And just to keep the taxpayers aware that we have talked about the increases and decreases. And I think a 7.5 number would be fairer to the taxpayers, to the burden of the taxpayer. This is through attrition, not through layoffs or anything else. That's what we're.
I'm going to correct you on that for one second. We believe 98%, because most of these are in positions where people have certifications from here to here. We cannot promise, but we feel very, very, very confident it will be attrition.
That's what I'm saying, and that's why I like that figure of 7.5 better than six. It gives us a more accurate look at the budget, I believe.
Further discussion.
Yeah, I have comments.
Yep.
But I, I want, I don't want to go line by line on these items. I think we should be looking at this as a whole. I want to, I want to vet these out and then make a motion, if that's possible.
Okay. Well, we've already, we've already, we've already had that discussion. I hate to say it, but I pulled rank, sorry, but I, I think in my, in my dissertation, I mucked up the things a little bit, so we're going to go line by line. Sorry, Corey, I understand exactly where you're coming from, but I think each item has to be discussed.
Well, I want to discuss.
If we go to a total and then go back, I think it'll just be more confusing, you know. All right.
So if I heard correctly here, I'm hearing that there's been discussion for adding one and a half instead of two and a half?
That is correct.
That's a motion.
There's a motion and a second on that and a discussion. Would you like to discuss? Okay, we lose him?
What, how, what programs, Mr. Ambrose, will be impacted by not bringing a second person in?
It's hard to tell until we have a clear line of, of resignations and shifts, but certainly based on just sheer enrollment numbers, there will be reductions at all levels. And the administrative team feels confident that if we retain a couple of teaching positions, the first place that we would look to keep teaching positions is at the lower elementary levels.
And this is not including the student adjustment council, right? That's not the discussion at hand.
That is not the discussion at hand.
And you said something important to me though, a second ago, about depending on resignations.
Yes.
So what happens if there were no resignations? We would have those staff anyways?
Well, I think it's important to recognize that, that it's very unusual that no one would retire, and we are aware of a number of retirements, and we've already accepted three retirements. So, so it's important to note that, that, again, I'll just kind of reiterate what I've said from the beginning, which is that the administrative team feels very comfortable with six positions, six and a half. We certainly can do it at seven and a half, and this, at this point, it's kind of up to the board to decide as a group what they want to do.
Okay. Okay. Further discussion.
So just returning to the issue of VELAX for a moment. I understood there were weaknesses in using. I'm arguing to go with the 8.5.
Okay.
To return to the original.
Well, I just don't want to get mucked up on, on programs and.
It has to do with restoring.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
8.5 or 1.5 for that matter. I'd prefer to leave it at 8.5 because as I understand it, there was discussion at one of our presentations that VELAX has been growing at over 9%.
Thank you, Governor.
Over last year.
I think I've got it.
In enrollment. And they have just hired 10 new instructors and will hire 10 more this winter. It is a voluntary program. There must be something good going on there if it's growing that rapidly. They're using an authentication service for authenticating student users. And Mr. Trammell's comment that the digital divide is, is constraining our modest enrollment in VELAX is not a strong explanation, given that our students are armed with devices at a very high cost to taxpayers and have access to the internet at our school districts. So I am still comfortable with 8.5 as an adjustment in the face of declining enrollment. And there have been many reports that VELAX is doing very well, both from Wired Magazine and New Hampshire Public Radio. So I'm happy with 8.5.
I, I would like to ask the superintendent a question.
Sure.
Would, would any of these be affected, would VELAX affect these in any way?
Not, not, not at the level of 2.5 added back in. The reduction, that VELAX would not affect that. Again, if, if positions are added back in, it is more likely, the first place that we would add back in is at the elementary level.
Okay.
Not the middle and high school level.
Corey?
Right. So not only is learning by mapping, then you need to offer that as a level, not as a solution for like teachers in the classroom. Not only that, but surely we, as a board, listening to the superintendent taking the recommendation for to achieve outcomes, if his recommendation, his education expert and his leadership team are coming back to us and telling us his proposed budget does not have enough to be in, it's required to order to achieve the outcomes that he wants to achieve with his leadership team, with his staff. He'd like to go ahead and see that number, see if that can restore.
Okay.
And also, again, we're talking about a decreasing student enrollment. We're talking about classes throughout the district, and if we're losing enrollments, we're going to end up with teachers possibly, as I've been told from the outside, that if we have teachers sitting around doing nothing, we're paying. Any company has to look at an attrition rate. You have to be able to exist with the knowing that it's going to happen. If we have 1.5 above what we've started with, it shouldn't really make that much of an impact on anything that we're trying to produce.
Okay.
And our product is the student. We want to give them the best that we can give them.
So having teachers like at the high school and at all levels.
I've got to tell you, I'm allowing you to speak, okay? But this is really school board and the budget, but as a student, I would love to hear your input. Okay?
Well, my understanding is that I'm here to be able to speak.
That, that, yes, but, but I understand, but go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Does she have, do you have a mic, Lauren?
Oh, I don't.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I wholeheartedly believe that if we want to stop more students from leaving, we need good staff and, and like an adequate number of staff. So I think that worries are that we're losing students, but I think that if we're cutting more teachers than we have to, we're just going to lose more students.
Further discussion. Corey, you've already spoken, I think, twice. Pam has her hand up. Let me get Pam first.
Tammy, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tammy.
So I am certainly interested in fiscal responsibility and, you know, conservatism, but my feeling on this question is that it's, it's a number one issue, the number one critical priority that was identified by the administration. And I, given that we have a new administration, you know, a new team, they're still working together, and I, I felt that it was expressed pretty strongly by the superintendent that they really felt a lot more comfortable with the two and a half, the, adding the two and a half teaching positions back in. So I would, my feeling is that I would tend to, to lean more in their direction and give them some leeway. I would prefer to add the two and a half as opposed to one and a half. So I would, I, I do not support this motion.
Corey, I think we've got a feeling of the boards, but if you'd like to add something?
Thank you for your comment. And number one, Larry, do enrollment, he provides, is it in one level? And ultimately have attrition, as we can see. And that's what's occurring, and the superintendent's leadership team believes we're losing some staff just by attrition here along with retirement. So I'd like to go ahead and say I don't support this motion, and I'd like to go ahead and see if we can have teachers restore. This will send us a wrong message if we don't support this, the current staff of all the board values and could potentially cause more staff to leave.
I'm going to do, I'm going to speak first and then I'm going to ask two things, but let's say, this is something we can certainly address next year, that you've heard me talk about other items we can address next year. So I guess what I'm going to say is, Larry, would you like to withdraw your motion or your second, or we can vote on it?
Wait, wait, wait.
You want to vote on it?
I have something else.
Oh, okay. I think we've got the feeling of the board, but if you'd like to speak, by all means.
Yeah. I, I agree that we have two jobs as school board members. One is to fund an adequate education, make sure the students get what they need. The other, and this is according to the New Hampshire School Board Association, one of the vital aspects of the school board roles and responsibilities in the development of a budget that serves the needs to students while simultaneously respecting the ability of taxpayers to fund such a system. We asked the superintendent, and he worked with the leadership team, to come up with ways that we can do that. That's our job. And the superintendent and the leadership team have worked very hard to try to accomplish that. And they've come back and they've told us that they can work with what they've proposed as, proposed, and it's not going to detract from their goals for this coming year. I hear stories from community members, grandparents, mothers, you know, 80-year-old women who were out cleaning houses to pay their property taxes. There's a lot of people that don't, aren't in their peak earning years. They can't afford 300, 400, $500 a year tax increases. We have to be fair to the public. We're being, we're doing the best job we can for the schools and the, and the students. We also have to be fair to the public. And I'm going to support Larry's motion of, it's sort of splitting it down the middle.
So when we're talking about being fair to the public, I'm really frustrated personally with the divides that have been purported for as long as I've lived in town between people that have to clean houses to pay their taxes and everyone is in the same boat. And some people in the boat have already raised their children. Some people in the boat never had kids going to the schools. Some people in the boat have babies and are working like crazy and aren't yet in the schools, and a lot of people in the boat have kids in the schools. Everyone's in the same boat. We are all paying taxes. We are all part of a social contract to educate children. The proposed budget that Mr. Ambrose put forth, when he proposed it initially, he very clearly stated, please correct me if I misrepresent what I recall.
Sure.
He very clearly stated, the board has asked me to present this flat budget. As a result, there would be X number of teachers reduced, which was eight, was it 8.5?
Yes.
8.5. At that time, I believe you said, I think that this would have a detrimental effect on our students. However, we are willing to do it because this is what the board has said that they want. I recall, please correct me if I'm wrong, you saying, I would be much more comfortable saying six or six and a half. Am I remembering this correctly?
I, I only have one point to correct. I don't feel that the, the term detrimental was used. I, I think that we could, we could run the district at the proposed budget. I have said clearly from the very beginning in the first presentation that the team would prefer to cut six positions, not 8.5.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure that everyone understands, can we run the district with 8.5 cuts? Yes. Would it be better with less? Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So I'm just trying to, just trying to recall.
Congruency is important.
So thanks for that clarification. I'm still speaking.
Corey, you know, keep talking.
It is very difficult, and I will use the word detrimental, to add in an inexperienced teacher at the last minute in August when all of a sudden you have more kids than you thought you were going to have, and that does happen. From an educational standpoint, it is not ideal. From a staff retention standpoint, it is not ideal. I agree with Tammy. I think if this is the number one thing that administration says on their priority list that they need added back in, and we're still talking about a reduction in teachers of six, if this was added back in, we're still talking about reducing staff. And just from a sound educational standpoint and a prioritization standpoint, I have to agree with Tammy. I think adding back in, I don't even know how you add in half a teacher, but adding back in this two and a half number, to me, is educationally sound. And I hear that sensitive to the taxpayer, I'm also a taxpayer, me too, you know, two working parents. And if we're going to cut in certain places, I would prefer not to do it with the people who most directly influence the students. And as has been reported, it would mostly affect the elementary students, which is the foundation, so.
Larry?
Yes. Before this all started, I had a little discussion with Tom. And I asked him point blank this question, what would happen if we reduced it down to 7.5? Because I've had people ask me that question. So I asked Tom, and essentially what he told me, we can live with that, there should be no problems. Now, should is the magic word there. I don't care whether you're working as a school or a business or whatever. There's always that should behind everything we do. As long as the kids are not impacted, I have no problem with 7.5. If the children, the kids, I don't care what grade they're in, is impacted with this, then I'd say, as far as I'm concerned, we can keep them all. But we have to look at the other side of the coin and say, yes, maybe nobody in town needs that extra, what, 10 cents per thousand? But we need to be careful that we don't inflate the budget more than what we want to. But we also want to make sure we are giving the kids all that they need and want. So I've already talked to Tom about this, so I have a good feeling for it. And that's the only reason I brought it up. If I had thought otherwise, we would not have heard this from me at all.
Could we move the motion?
Well, the motion has been moved.
You're moving the motion?
I've moved the motion.
Okay. Okay, Corey, we're going to move the motion.
I just have one point to make.
One point, go ahead.
Tom brought forth a two, a two plus, a level funded and a negative, and the level funded is removing those students, not those staff members. Not necessarily what he wanted to do. He presented three budgets, and in order to meet those three ways. He presented three budgets, and in order to meet those three way aligned items, that's what he has to do to make it happen. Not necessarily if he wanted to, because we asked him for those three budgets.
Right, okay, thank you, all right. Move the motion?
So moved.
Okay. All, all in favor of Larry's motion to move it to seven and a half? Yes or no?
No.
Two fellows? All in favor of keeping it at eight and a half, I believe is correct?
No, what would happen is this motion would fail and there needs to be another motion.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, okay. A, a, all opposed, sorry. Okay, Corey, that's five, okay. A motion to keep the two point five, which would be keeping it to eight point five.
Uh, no.
So at six point five.
There's no motion on the table right now?
No, 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 I'm asking for a motion.
Oh, you're asking?
A motion for six point five.
No, eight, eight.
Shouldn't the motion be to add a two point five?
Six point five, right.
Well, actually, the motion would be for teacher positions at two point five, as printed on the sheet.
That would be the motion, if you...
If you wanna keep the position.
Can I, can I make a clear?
Go ahead, yeah.
All right, so.
With all the problems, positive and negative.
Yeah, what, what would happen next is that folks need to decide. I, I think if we don't come to some consensus here, we might be here for a really long time, but that's okay. But I just wanna be clear that, that the next step is for a motion, and that motion could be to add two teachers back into the budget, it could be for two point five, the motion to add one just failed.
Right.
So it's wide open for what, I mean, you could add five, you can do what you want.
Right, no.
Right, you're, as a board.
So I move to add the two point five in that have been recommended by the administrative team as the number one priority.
So the result would be six?
Cuts.
Okay, now, just to clarify that, okay. We've already had lengthy discussion, do we need further discussion? All in favor? Jim?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Set six and one. Okay, any further discussion on that item? Michelle will total those in first, we'll get a total number at the end. Could I have a motion to pay more to substitutes, ninety dollars a day, and I will tell you, I believe it's seventy-five dollars a day for ten days, and then it goes to eighty? Could I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Let me say something personally here, because it has to do personally, when I retired from the school district, um, gosh, I wanna say eight years ago, it was seventy-five dollars and eighty dollars after ten days, it hasn't moved in eight to ten years. And given the zero unemployment pretty much today, I would strongly recommend, tell you the truth, I'm not sure ninety will bring in more.
Yep.
But I, I, I just wanna give my two cents in there, so now go ahead and discuss.
And I will say substitute teachers are in a shortage in every single district, and good subs go to the highest paying school district, and that's just, that's the way it goes, supply and demand.
Right, right.
And I second that.
I, I will say that here, we are lucky, we have a number of what I call substitutes that like to come to Sandborne, because most of them live in the district. My next door neighbor just did one, I think, yesterday. Am I correct, Mr. Staff, uh, Mr. Slack? Did he, did he, you get a new sub yesterday or the day before?
Uh, you had told me, yes.
Yes, you know, and he, and he just started.
Since you're getting the floor.
Yep.
We are struggling to fill the building with subs there, and it's a big problem. And it's actually...
Yeah, by all means.
At the middle school, it's a massive, massive...
If, if I may say so, the, the, the team is, the team discussed three options. One was incrementally, sorry, incrementally increasing the amount by ten dollars to see if it made a difference. I had originally discussed with them raising it to a hundred dollars a day, because I don't know that ninety will be enough to do the draw, but I like to move in steps, right? So let's look at the data, we do ten dollars more a day, see how it goes. If, if more money doesn't do it, the team really feels strongly that we need to hire some permanent substitutes that are a part of the district. It is causing a major educational disruption. You can see, think about the, the potential of many things that we could add to a list like this, and this is number two. That's really speaks volumes to me, and I just wanna be clear that I really do work, you know, very rarely will I say to my team, I, I know y'all feel this way, but this is what we need to do and this is why. This team truly came up with this list in, in a consensus model, right? This is what they felt was impacting their daily work with children every day.
Larry?
Well, since we just heard that this is the major, uh, one of the major impacts for our students' learning, and we're just heard that ninety dollars may not be enough, maybe we need to talk seriously about increasing it to where we can get good qualified. And so...
I like his idea of increments.
I like his idea too, but I think we need to go higher than ninety dollars.
Well, right now, the motion is for ninety, so.
I know.
Let's see how it passes.
Um, so, this is for next year's budget, are you, are you planning to wait till next year to raise?
We can do.
Well, I appreciate the question. I certainly, because we're discussing next year's budget tonight, this was going to be an agenda item on our next board meeting. So I don't think that we can really wait until next year, but I need to talk.
Sounds like.
I need to, um, how do I say it? I told one community member today, we're kinda feel like we're coming up for air from all these budget questions, so Michelle and I just need to sit down and take a look at the budget and what we might be able to do this year. So I, I, I'm not ready to make a recommendation to the board tonight, but I would say that, yeah, this is a pretty critical issue, and I don't know that we can wait until next year.
You will probably see it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
So this amount is sort of, that's a guess, and we're, we're assuming that we're guessing too low already, it sounds like?
Well, I think it's important to note that, that substitutes, it's a dynamic concept in nature, depends on how many people are out for how long, and each year can vary by a certain amount, so the total amount of money in the substitute line probably could be reallocated if we need to raise the rates a little bit. I, I certainly, you know, the team felt like this was a good place to start. I would feel comfortable, you know, one thing we can do as a group, this, this board, is we can discuss it at the next meeting, the potential, trying ninety dollars a day for a month and getting data, and then having another conversation. I mean, I certainly am not, not, I, I do not think that at this point, considering the budget and the needs that we have, I think if we added this twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, that that would be a huge help. And then how we choose to allocate that, whether it's ninety dollars a day, ninety-five dollars a day, even this amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars is a rough estimate of what it would take to move it up to ten, ten dollars to ninety dollars a day. So it really is dynamic in nature, I mean.
Because you don't know, huh?
We don't know how many people are gonna be out sick, we don't know, you know? So we have a, a, that's one of those fund lines that even, I don't even trust the three year averages of subs.
That was my question.
You just need to have, you need to have a, you need to have a baseline of subs, and then if we don't spend it, it goes back to the taxpayers to offset taxation the next year. It's just one of those items that you have to plan for, even if it doesn't happen.
Okay. I, I just recognize Pam, I'll get to you next, Corey.
So while I appreciate the arguments being presented, and I understand the need for substitutes, I even have higher permanent subs on my add-ons list here, they're written down. I don't wanna go too far afield, but one of my reasons for being concerned about this budget is that we've been warned we need reserve accounts for special ed, for example, for regular education, and we were given numbers for those, which would be separate warrant articles. And I'd like to be able to go to the taxpayers and support both a budget and potentially some warrant articles for reserve accounts. Special education, regular education possibly could be used as needed to hire a permanent sub, should the taxpayers approve that separate warrant. So you see my conundrum here. I'd like to support both, but I'm not sure that if we increase this budget, we'll be able to get other possible warrants.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
And I appreciate your arguments, however.
Yeah, yeah.
Corey?
Um, we've heard for many years now that our school district has challenges in ensuring now when a substitute teacher, when a substitute teacher receives a call from Sandborne, that they're choosing us instead of their neighboring district, because they more highly, as Karen has said. In all my travels and participation in education committees and conferences nationwide over the last couple of years, the shortage of substitute teachers is nationwide. And the real, the real truth is, is we had teachers that made more as waiters and waitresses and less than preschool teachers. We're talking about going from ten dollars an hour right now to eleven point two five for an eight-hour day. Eleven point two five per hour. I think Larry was right, we might want to, ah, go on.
Couldn't hear the last sentence.
I think Larry is correct with his statement. Do we wanna continue the path of becoming the attractive education center where we honor students, where kids are supported and inspired, and teachers are interested in coming here? I believe Larry is correct, nine may not be enough. We might wanna consider going higher.
May I speak, Chair Brown?
Pardon?
May I speak?
Yep.
Just, I, I just wanted to reiterate that, that with, I don't want my business manager to give me the evil eye, because I don't wanna use the wrong terminology for New Hampshire, but when we have adequate, um, reserve accounts or funds, in the manner that Dr. Brown mentioned, it's a lot easier for the board to say in the middle of next year, this sub business is not working out, we need to raise the pay a little bit. The problem with the organization as it's set up right now, there are no reserves in that regard, but again, I, I think that, that, I would say, and Michelle, feel free to chime in if, if I'm not saying this properly, but if we, if the board were to adopt another twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars for substitutes, raise the rate of pay to ninety dollars and we found that isn't working, we can work with this, this budget to, to potentially increase it a little bit more, and frankly, I may be asking the board to increase it with this current year's budget in two weeks, right? This is a problem that we need to address, and so we're already searching for some funds to support an increase this year. So then this money would just go to increase it a little further if we need to. I, I really, I just wanna say that I, my instinct would be that we don't need to increase this more than the twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven, that would be my opinion.
Yes, you're comfortable.
I'm comfortable with that. Michelle?
Move the question.
Move the motion.
Move the question.
Move the question. Okay, all in favor of ninety dollars? Corey?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, could I have a motion on supplies for the baking school? Eight thousand dollars Memorial, twelve thousand dollars for the baking. Do we wanna discuss these individually? Because they are two different schools. I think actually we have to, because you're talking two different schools here.
You're talking two different...
And you've gone here, you got, you got two issues with one motion, I don't think you can do that. So how about a motion for the Memorial School first?
So moved.
Sorry.
Okay. Discussion?
Back when we first started all this, I talked to you, Tom, about the Memorial School, about the cuts that they were saying.
Yep.
Uh, this makes me feel a whole lot better to have this back in. I feel a lot more comfortable with that.
I appreciate that, and, uh, Mr. Heath, I would say that we have two new principals at these schools. They have been incredible team players in the process of trying to find a reasonable way to bring a budget forward that's fair to the taxpayers, but still meets the needs of the students. And I do think that, that, um, when you look at a very small supply budget, eight thousand and twelve thousand dollars is a significant percentage of their supply budget, but we agreed as a team that we were all gonna make cuts and work hard, and they did that. Thank you for recognizing that.
Um, I just wanna point out that there's two account items here with, with, that have budgets or supplies, school supplies. One is account fifty-six one hundred, the other's account fifty-six four hundred. And FY sixteen, the budget for that account was four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for fifty-six one. In seventeen, it was forty, four hundred and eighty thousand. In eighteen, it was five hundred and thirty-four thousand six, and the proposed is five hundred and thirty-six point nine thousand dollars. And in the fifty-six four hundred, in FY sixteen, it was ninety-eight thousand. In FY seventeen, it was seventy-six thousand. In FY eighteen, it was ninety-eight thousand, and the proposed is a hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-two. So that's twenty, uh, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars right there, between what was proposed, what's proposed and what was actually budgeted, and I don't know how much was actually used of that.
I, I would just say that this, we've looked at those lines. And I asked Michelle to do quite a bit of homework on those today, and I just wanna say this, and I really do hate to go back to the same well for this topic, but the reality is that supplies are dynamic in nature, Jim, and so what I would say is that, in my opinion, it's kinda like this, we wanna be responsible agents of the community's money. That is very important to me, because we, as a school district, are a large part of the local taxation. So I don't wanna say to my principals, spend it or you're gonna lose it. So if we have money in an account that, let's say that we have a hundred thousand dollars in an account, and we find some efficiencies during the school year, and we only spend eighty-nine thousand, I don't wanna reduce that account back down to eighty-nine thousand, because what if the next year, there's a real need in that line? So the argument for this is that that money, if it's not being expended, should go back to the taxpayers the following school year. I, I wasn't able to pull those two accounts for three years right before this meeting, but I'll simply say that where supplies are concerned, I've been very clear to the team that using paper in excess, using writing implements or math supplies, only buy what you really need, because then when we ask you for something, you'll believe us that we really need it, right? Credibility is important to me, and so I just wanna be careful that, um, look, these folks brought forward some pretty big cuts, right? We can do it if you hold the line, we'll be okay. Right, I want you to hear that. I would not bring forward a budget that I can't live with. If I couldn't live with it, I would come in here and stand up at that podium and say, you asked me to give you two point eight percent or two percent, and we cannot do that for these reasons, right? And, and as I'm here longer, you may hear those conversations. Having said that, I do feel that with two new principals, these two schools, they, they really went pretty deep on the, on the supplies, particularly the baking school. There's another piece that folks need to know, which is that there is a lot of confusion this year between the requested budget, the adopted budget, and what's actually been spent over the years. As we realign our accounting practices and have a conversation about the way that we're going to do budgeting as a team, that will get a lot easier for folks and will feel a lot more comfortable.
All I'm pointing out is that the money's there now.
Thank you, and I understand.
Let me tell you what, the viewpoint just hit me. I, I was prepared to vote against this and go to like four thousand and six thousand, but he just said something very important, and that is, we have two new principals there. So when they came up with their budget, they didn't have any institutional knowledge. So although I was going to say, let's move that to four and six, and when he said, just because you have the money, don't spend, it doesn't mean you spend it all, you know, at the end of the year, you say, oh, I've got this money left, here come the purchase orders, you know? So I, I'm changing my mind, I'm just giving you where I'm coming from, that I, I am comfortable with the eight and the twelve, even though I was gonna split the difference, because they're new.
Yep.
They don't have the institutional knowledge, and this board and this administration is not like previous boards that we've ever had, nothing yet, previous boards or administrations. We look at the line, and we don't spend because we've got it, all right? Both the administration, I think, and the school board is of the same mindset, just because you send your children out with twenty dollars to, to go to the movies, and you know they're only spending fifteen, first thing you say when they come through the door is, where's my change? Well, you gave me twenty, so I spent it. No, I gave you sufficient and a little bit more, give me what you didn't need to spend. So that's my viewpoint, that's what I wanna impart to you. You're up.
I will.
Okay, Corey, go ahead.
Um, one comment. On October first, the, the moment report for baking was three hundred and fifty-four students. If you find that five, the numbers that they're asking for, by a hundred and eighty school days, that's thirty-four dollars per student at nineteen cents per day, which is ninety-five cents per week. Less than a dollar is gonna go to the supply.
He's right.
Yep.
Eight students, thirty dollars, sixteen cents, eighty dol, eighty cents a week.
Okay.
Eighty cents a week for a student.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Could you just, I'm sorry.
What am I doing tonight? What am I doing tonight? What am I doing tonight?
I had my hand up too. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, you're tampering.
I just, could you just give a rough idea of what, what supplies they're not going to be able to buy if we don't? Thank you, I was thinking the same.
I'll have the principal speak to that, because it's better if it comes from them at the building level. Mr. Snyder, would you like to start?
Thank you for having us here tonight. Some of these initial cuts are things that, are just things that we would do, that we would work within our means. Replacement furniture is one of those things. Things that are, you know, standard things in classrooms, whiteboards hang on the walls, they're costly, they have a life cycle. So we're in pretty good shape, but we look at that and plan for a certain number of those to have to be replaced each year. So I went to our staff and I said, you know, "Is that something that we could live within our means?" And they're saying that they would be willing to work with that, but we have to understand that the whiteboards we have right now hanging on the walls are not going to just be, you know, high-quality, useful, you know, materials long-term. But for a year, can we make it work? That was fine. I went to our PE teachers, and I said, "Here's what's budgeted," and they literally said to me, "Just zero it out for next year, we'll make do with what we have." The playground equipment, or balls, things like that, again, have a life cycle. And so they're willing to make it work with what they have, but that's not a long-term sustainable solution. Music, I know our superintendent's very, very aware of our music program, and I appreciate that as well, but one of the things that we would have to do is forego replacing a very old instrument, I believe it's a trombone, you know, not a standard necessarily, you know, instrument that kids would choose to play, but it's something that we have on hand for those that do. And the one that we have is quite old, and needs repairs, and we're kind of at that stage where, do you try to, you know, repair something, or do you just replace it? So those are some of those examples of things that our staff said, "Yes, we'll live within our means, but we know that that's not going to be a long-term sustainable solution."
Does this include books?
I'm sorry.
Does this include books, like books for the library, books for the classroom?
It does, the library has a significant reduction there. And again, I've talked, you know, pretty openly with our librarian and just said, "What would happen if?" And she said, you know, "We have always been very well-supported," but again, they're books, so if you reduce the cost that's there, the line item, by what's here, it would obviously limit what we could purchase. So would we purchase what we needed? Yes. Are there additional resources that would be nice to have? Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dr. Heinz?
Any other questions?
They want to.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Dr. Heinz should also chime in, I think. I'm sorry.
Thank you. In echoing what Mr. Snyder said, a lot of the reductions that we made at Memorial mirror the reductions that they made. Our biggest line item that we zeroed out completely was our furniture budget, and that includes things, again, like whiteboards. We've got furniture in the library, actually, our shelving in the library came from the seminary school. That library shelving is not even elementary school size. We don't have appropriate spacing between the rows and things if we needed to have students go in there who might be in wheelchairs or have some other equipment needs. So those things are things that we're sort of pushing off. We're looking at other things in the classrooms that need to be replaced after time, because they wear out, things like whiteboards, things like chairs, just some of those things. And again, there's a library line in there, we had some of the confusion that Superintendent Ambrose was discussing about proposed, adopted, and used in past years that we're looking at. Our librarian did cut back, and it would be great to be able to increase the number of books and the different types of books that are available there. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking at in the elementary school to make sure that we've got what the kids need and that it fits them and it's appropriate for them.
Thank you. Further discussion? Dr. Brown? Can you hold on, Corey? Dr. Brown?
Would any of this supply budget go toward maker space setup, or is it for other things?
I'll just tell you what I'd like, how's that?
Well, I'm wondering if it can be allocated.
Yeah, I think that, so for example, Mr. Snyder and Dr. Heinz removed $1,500 for water, like water dispensers. I really hope they'd spend that on a maker space instead of putting the water dispenser back in. So we have to remember that our team is getting to know their buildings, and part of what I'm kind of advocating for here is that I'm very impressed by how responsible they are, and maker spaces would be definitely something that we need to talk about, because student engagement is important. If you don't know what a maker space is, it's really cool, we'll fill you in later, unless someone would like us to do that now.
Stay with the budget. Well, Corey, did you have a question?
I'd like to move the motion.
Thank you very much, I was hoping that. Okay, motion, to move the motion that's been made, all in favor of?
Can you reread the motion, please?
Pardon?
Can you reread the motion?
Okay, the motion is to restore?
Or, well, to add $8,000, we were going to do that separately.
I couldn't say restore, you're right, to add $8,000 to the budget.
For the Memorial School.
For the Memorial School. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that would be five to two. Did you get who the two were and who the five were?
Who were the two?
Taryn and Pam. Accept the motion to?
You're going to do the baking.
Add, yeah, I was going to say restore again, but we haven't taken it up, to add $12,000 to the baking school. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I think our discussion is going to be pretty much what the baking school was, and we've already heard from the principal, I'm sorry, the Memorial School, we've already heard the principal, but any further discussion on this $12,000? Okay, I'm going to move the motion, all in favor of adding $12,000 to the baking school?
Aye.
Four, four, five, four, sorry, Corey. Moving on to, I was going to have a break at eight, but I'm hoping we could actually get this through. If we don't, we'll have a break. But additional professional development, make a motion to add, to, yeah, add $25,000, I'm sorry, to put $25,000 into the budget for additional professional development.
So moved.
Well, I've got a motion first, Corey, we'll get there in a second, because it can be under the discussion. I'm sorry, a second?
Second.
Second by Taryn. Okay, discussion.
Additional, go ahead.
No, you can go first.
Don't go ahead.
I am curious how much of, do we know how much of this will be used to support the new mentoring program that Mr. Terrell is endeavoring to get underway here?
We did put, I believe, $20,000 in for mentoring for next year, is that correct? So that would depend on the need of the, I just want to make sure that everyone, yes, to answer it bluntly, right? But the process for any professional development for these funds is that we're going to look at student data, the work that the students are doing, the deficiencies that teachers see within that work, and then we're going to ask them what they need to improve their instruction around that work. If it's a book, that they want to do a book study, we will use the money to purchase books. If it's, if it's having an outside speaker come in to work with them, or a consultant, we'll do that, we had that today for everyday math. If it's a professional development where they travel to something and learn about it, and then come back and teach their peers, I really want this to be teacher-driven, because I've worked in so many districts where it's all about what everyone else wants to do, and no one asks the teachers what they need. And so this is really, I'm very passionate about this area, so I'm very excited about it, and I think that if we have new teachers who need additional supports based on what they're expressing, then the money would go there. If we hire new teachers who are veterans and they want to grow their practice, then we would do it that way. I just don't want to give a yes/no answer for a complex topic.
So what I'm hearing you say is that additional professional development funds will be utilized directly to improve student achievement by giving the teachers what they say they need in order to do that more effectively?
Correct.
Okay.
Corey, you had a question, I'm sorry, Corey? I'm sorry. Corey, you got something?
I do. Is it a true statement, I have a couple things here, is it a true statement that this brings the budget line item up to $132,000 per student?
You are correct.
Is it, I'm going back to the initial, thank you, I'm going back to the initial questions and answers on the proposed budget, Part 1, from November 15, 2017. By my calculation, the.
Corey, you're breaking up, we cannot hear you. Corey, we cannot hear you.
All right, on page 4, question 8, who's a watching thing that you'd like to present? In addition to the other professional development that you've already described, in that fine item with $340,000, situation from budget committee, and also from our committee, that this may not be enough. In my comment, I would support removing, I was actually going to make a motion, $200,000.
Corey, you're breaking up, we heard after motion and nothing else.
My comment is, I don't think we're actually putting in enough here based upon the superintendent's goals and the things that you'd like to see happen that help attract staff. We've all learned that professional development budget allocation shortcuts in that budget about them. They show that high quality is widely acknowledged and is the most important school-level factor that influences student achievement. You identified that on your meeting that you chaired at the school on November 15. I would like to make a suggestion of removing the motion for, indeed, bringing up the budget, the professional development, the $200,000. I would support that.
You want to add $200,000?
No, I would like to remove the existing motion, and then go ahead and add in the down, so that'd be roughly 132 minus 25, so 132 minus.
122.
So that's 107, so I'd like to go ahead and ask to incorporate an additional 93,000, not 25.
Okay. We have a motion now for 25,000. I'm going to move the motion for the 25, see what happens.
Got to wait until everybody gets a chance.
Okay, I'm sorry. Then you can make a motion on the same subject once we finish with this one. So, Jim, you're up.
One of the things that you predicated the professional development on, Mr. Ambrose, was that we have a definition of student success, because we want to be able to have measurable outcomes. We don't have that definition. We don't have a professional development master plan.
We do have a professional development master plan, yeah.
What I'm suggesting is, we currently have 32,000 in that, in professional development.
That's the total?
Yeah, it's, it's account, I've got the account number if you want it, yeah. So if you add 75, that's 107,000. I like the idea of going incrementally, I fully support professional development, but I think you need to have a very clear-cut plan for what you're going to do with it. If 75,000 added to 32,000 is 107,000, at this time, give another conversation about professional development that's already been done, and that there's almost a year's worth of absorption that needs to be done from that, I don't see a need for this other 25,000, and I especially don't see a need for 97, 97 more thousand.
May I just share that we, as I, I did answer a question on November 15th? And the question was, "What would you do if money was not an object?"
Right.
I just want to remind the taxpayers that I recognize, and the team recognizes, that money is an object, okay? We're not, we're not saying that there's unlimited funds. Conversely, I was shocked to see $32,000, which is .001% for professional development for a $34 million organization. I certainly just want everyone to know that my opinion on this is that money for professional development moves us to the ladder of achievement quickly. So the more that's there, the faster we move. I certainly am very comfortable taking incremental steps, Mr. Baker. So what I'm asking you as a board to do is to debate this and then tell me what I have, and I will make it, I will make every penny of it sincerely count as best as we can as a team, right? So I just wanted to speak to that, that it's hard to answer a wish list question and then go back on it once you've answered it.
Right.
Do you know what I'm, so I'm just going to say, yeah, if I had 320 grand, we would have literacy coaching, and we would have people going to New York to Columbia to study, we would have Columbia coming here, we would be bringing in Nancy Atwell, we would be doing all these great things that I've done in other districts that moved achievement forward. We don't have to run this race, right? This is a marathon, so we, let's, just, you all tell me what you're comfortable with moving forward to the voters, and I'll make it work.
Yeah, you said this is a two-to-three-year project, and I would, you know, suggest that the reason that the professional development budget was 32,000 is because money was being allocated to other resources during drops in enrollments, and reality was not being faced. So now, fortunately, we're in a different, different situation, we've got people that are facing reality, we understand that. As enrollments drop, any organization has to make adjustments from low-demand areas to high-demand areas. This I would consider a high-demand area. But I think we need to do it with a plan, and we need to do it right, and we need to do it incrementally. And if 75,000 is good enough, if that meets the needs, we don't want to go over from meeting needs to budgeting wishes. That's very important for credibility with the community. We need to focus on needs, what's needed, and not get into the granting of wishes business, because that's where you, that's where warrant articles fail, that's where budgets fail, budgets fail, and we have a long history of that.
And I would also say that I think that it's important for all of us to keep our eye on, you know, it's tough to do this when I haven't finished my entry plan, and I have, will have concrete steps as a result of that entry plan. So basically, I lost a month of time to meet with staff answering questions, which is fine, but now that I can get back to that good work, I think it's so important to recognize that we are going to have to ask voters soon, in the next year to a year and a half, to have a conversation or a vote about writing the teacher's contract steps. And that can't happen this year, because the contract doesn't come up for negotiation until next year. So we have to be careful about, I do want the community to hear me that we recognize the resources are finite. Thank you for your time.
One thing I would like to say is, because I obviously was a benefit of this, if you want to call it a benefit, you have to keep your employees current, right? I had three certifications. I had to get so many hours in each certification. When you go for certifications, I'm going to use biology, there was one of my certifications, I don't go and exclusively learn biology. I have to learn technology, I have to learn learners and learning and all these things. So it's not, you know, if this was a corporation, let's call this in-service training, or keeping people current, or whatever, you don't want to have people who aren't up to date or state-of-the-art. And this is funds to keep your people, I'm going to use the term "sharp," keep them knowledgeable in their field. So I think this is money that is very well-spent, and understand, every teacher has to be certified every three years, they have to have so many hours. And this is a way to make sure that they are current, sharp, and certified, or can get certified in their area. I personally think $25,000 is very well-spent, given the .0000001 of the budget, or whatever it is. So I think it's money well-spent, it keeps, it also. It keeps, it also shows our employees that we're behind them, that we are going to make sure they stay current and make sure, or at least have the ability to stay current and knowledgeable in their field. Okay, Corey, Corey had his hand up and, for a few minutes.
Quick question. Can I get your number?
Corey, we missed a question, sorry. We missed it again. We missed it again.
How many staff members does this apply?
How many, how many staff were what?
How many staff members does this apply?
How many staff members, district-wide?
Would it apply every teacher?
Everybody.
Every, every teacher?
A number.
Does, does support staff also, pairs have to also, just from pairs?
Yeah.
Pairs and teachers?
Yes.
Am I correct on that?
Yeah, he wants to know pairs and teachers.
Okay. So let's just say it's every academic person?
Do you know how many?
He's probably...
I think that's what he's asking.
314.
How much is that?
314?
314, Corey.
If 314, divide that by 132,000, 132, what does that equal for a staff member?
Okay, I, 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 the question I think some of the members have is, we're not discussing 132 right now. We may discuss that when you bring it up. So can we discuss it then? Right now, we're on 25,000.
One last comment, one last comment. Historically, Mr. Baker, the last couple of years, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Trammell, that during the audience, I'm talking in the background, I know you're on.
Is it? Yeah, he's here.
The teachers or the staff for a couple of years actually held institute sessions, which lost a lot of charges. And so the professional line, development line item was actually being brought, brought down because we were actually finding we could make some money there. But those institutes have now moved on beyond our slum.
You're, you're, you're breaking up, so I'm going to try to paraphrase. Mr. Trammell, were there, were there programs that we had that, I'm going to use the word skewed, or lowered our actual costs?
Yes.
Okay. The answer to that is yes, Corey.
I know that because I've been involved in the board and the committee of committees.
Good lawyer, you asked a question you knew the answer to.
Well, because I think the community and the board are talking that they're no longer doing, that they're making, that they were making money off.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Pointless question.
Yes, we got, okay. I'm going to start over here. One more comment, go ahead.
There is a professional development budget that's tied to the collective bargaining agreement for $150,000, roughly.
It's 100,000.
100,000?
Yep.
Okay. So let's not forget about that money as well, and that addresses a lot of the training and the stuff that you're talking about, Pete.
So, so I would just say that, Jim, that is accurate. It's called ACP, and it is not under district control in the sense that we can't ask teachers what they need and then allocate that money. It's actually done through a proposal system through committees. And I won't say anything further about that, except that it absolutely does not meet the needs to, it obviously has not been successful in improving achievement. Right? So the areas of reading that we need to work on, it exists there, its effectiveness is, needs to be assessed.
It's the two buckets that we talked about.
Two, two, it's a very separate...
One, the rigid, specific, specific one, one, the flexible one.
Yeah, and it's interesting because it's broken into four or five different pots, and the way the whole thing works is very complicated.
Okay. Taryn?
Nope, I'm good.
Penny? Dr. Brown?
So, yeah, the additional compensation plan is 100,000, that Mr. Baker mentioned, for professional staff initiatives, conferences, and workshops. We also have in Article 22 of the collective bargaining agreement, 55,000 a year for college-approved, for course, coursework that teachers can complete to improve skills, such as UNH's course on literacy tutoring at the elementary level. Article 12 includes 1,500 a year in stipends for the teacher leader groups and 750 for mentoring new teachers. So we have quite a bit of money in the CBA geared toward upgrading skills, improving skills, attending conferences, and the 75,000, I think, is adequate for the coming year. I think we should define our goals as well and then consider more after that.
Move the motion?
Move the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Of additional $25,000 for professional development?
Yeah.
Five.
That's five. All opposed? Did you get to Jim and Pam, the other five who left? Corey, you were, you were talking about another motion. If we get the motion in a second, we will continue with that. Corey, you're up.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and motion that we add an additional $18,000 to the professional development line item.
Do we have a second? Absent of a second, the motion fails. Sorry, Corey.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We're going to move to sports. Now, this again has three, I'm sorry?
Can we take a brief break?
Yeah, I was thinking we'd probably get through this because it's the last item, but absolutely.
You might just like...
Five-minute break.
Five minutes.
Get started. By the way, that comes from Victor Daley, who started every school board, every staff meeting after school, I assume you still meet on Wednesdays, and he would always say, and a good friend of mine, said, "I'll bet I can tell you the first words Vic Daley says." And it was, "If I can have your attention, we can get started." So that's exactly what I say here. If I can have your attention, we can get started. Next item.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
For my clarification?
Yep.
On any of these things, if there's not a motion, do we still discuss it or no?
No, there's no, I believe that there's no...
Sorry, I haven't done this before.
If there's no...
Okay.
Okay, to answer the question, she just asked a question, if there is no motion, what happens? And that would be, they would not be added to...
Or discussed.
Or discussed.
I just wanted to understand.
Okay. So again, there's three items here. It's under sports. It's 14,096 dollars all total. I'll give you the numbers. Varsity bowling, $8,180. That would be discussed first because it's on the list. Bass fishing, $1,708. And JV golf, there is varsity and JV.
Yep.
JV golf, $4,208. Now, do I have a motion to discuss the first one? Lacking a motion?
I'll move.
Wait, 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 I'm sorry. Hold, hold on, I'm sorry, my mistake. Okay. Do we have a motion on varsity bowling, $8,180?
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second? No second, it does not pass. I certainly gave time, I think.
I think Corey was, I think Corey was...
I motioned. I said, yeah.
Right, okay, and I had two motions and no second. Okay, so it does not pass. Am I correct? Any disagreement? Okay. Bass fish, right, I'm sorry?
Did you want a second, though? I mean...
We have to have a second.
Did you want to second it?
He, he made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That's fine with me. I just have to go by the rules.
Okay.
Okay. Varsity bowling, discussion.
I'd like to say that I'll do a, here on my little sofa, I can relate to all the sports in one portal. Nearly one-third of the student population from Sanborn Medical School District, or Sanborn Medical School District, go through that, albeit through bowling, albeit through the fishing, albeit through hockey and other programs. My real comment here, though, is, now, let me start. Does audio back...
Corey, we can't, we couldn't hear you again.
Sorry.
All right. Okay. Does the audio... I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Now, with that, science and schools, you know, and you cannot be overlooked. It has a profound impact on individuals, to spur the whole, as well the community. Every school administrator and teacher wants a student who has pride in their school. Athletic facilities block the promotion of our school pride, such as homecoming, pep rallies, and so forth, are intended to show off our school pride. As we know, athletics are powerful and transcendent. It can help bridge gaps between people who pick their student who has relatively nothing in common together. Normally, that gives many of our students families an unbelievable life-altering opportunity. My daughter, for example, is now a three, she plays three sports, which she never played before, and of that, some of it is going to be cut. I ask that we remind ourselves to keep that, that has been established, successful athletic bowling for our students and communities. Again, one increase in our community are three now. That means we have to base on the fund or not the funding. We can go ahead and put everything in warrant articles here, and there's a good chance that Aaron, or like, I don't mind, the fact of the matter is that Sanborn's school pride is becoming a la for every day, putting our individual differences aside, and yelling and cheering loud. I think you want to think, when we look at these two items, there's one that we haven't seen on here, so does hockey. We think about what this program needs to keep us hip-hops, what this program needs to give an opportunity to not to leave friends, and better yet, to become an attractive organization instead of having them leave our district to go play sports elsewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Any other comments? Okay, well, you know what? I always start with you guys. I'm going to start with Dr. Brown this time and go this way.
I don't know if our athletics director is here tonight.
Well, I think it'd be better if you spoke to a school board.
She could not be here tonight. She could not be here tonight due to a game.
I was wondering how many students were served by the varsity bowling program and why the travel budget is, the bulk of the amount requested, 3,400? Is it because the facilities are far away or distant?
I believe that the varsity bowling would be 20 students. And so that's 20 students, and yes, I would assume that the, the travel is $3,400 due to the fact that they would have to travel every time they play.
Right.
Even if it's not that far, buses are expensive.
And practice, too, probably.
Yeah, there'd be games and practices.
I don't have a problem with this. I think sports are a good thing, good activities for kids, but I'm just wondering, hockey was a warrant article. I don't see why these shouldn't be warrant articles as well.
Larry, you got your end up?
Yes, I have a comment. These are, I would consider these actually as athletic ventures. These are more or less clubs. Bowling club, fishing club, and golf. You go to a golf club, these are clubs. These are not what I would consider actual sports activities. They do accomplish getting kids off the street, I do agree with that. I would rather see these as put in as clubs, and if necessary, maybe we could help them out that way. But varsity bowling, if you look at it, is $409 per student. 20 students? Now, that is questionable whether that is even a financially viable situation. Are we getting a dollar back for a dollar spent?
Question, or statements?
Well, from my understanding, those three sports are already established as sports. To demote them to club status, I think, would be against the status quo.
Can I just ask, do students pay to play, Mr. Stack? Is that the way that works now?
Say that again.
Could you verify our student representative's point that the...
I'm sorry, I just took over.
How dare you?
No, I just wanted to know if, because Vicki's not here, and, and I don't, I, I only have limited information about these, is junior varsity golf, does that exist as a club at this time, or as a pay-to-play? Is that what...
Some of these, no, it doesn't, it doesn't exist right now. There has been club funds that gets provided sometimes by the athletic booters for some of these things to run. But, but I do want to specify or clarify Mr. Vicki's point. These, these can't be clubs in the sense that they are NHIAA sports.
Okay, okay.
They are actually, they do fall under that umbrella.
Thank you.
Such our kids are going to compete, that's, that's how they'd have to be done.
Yep.
So the funding for this is really for transportation and coach, which, again, you know, it's, it's, it depends on where they're going to be playing. We do try to share transportation costs, so it's, it's sometimes hard to put an exact dollar amount on some of these things per student.
Okay. Move the motion?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, sorry. One?
Aye.
One. All opposed? It's six to one. Corey, you can finish it. Okay, next one on the list is bass fishing, $1,708. Can I have, can I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Do we understand we are not putting that into the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Bass fishing, $1,708. Any discuss, any motion?
Motion? So...
I'm sorry, do you want to, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Any second. Corey is seconding. Any discussion? Okay, I'm going to start with Dr. Brown.
So I have the breakdown of expenses for bass fishing. It says $200 for uniforms. I'm wondering why bass fishing students need uniforms.
Hello, Bean.
Mr. Stack, do you have any thoughts on...
It's, it's when all the other schools are there and competing, they're all out, matching outfits, so it'd be the only school that doesn't have uniforms.
Can I ask a follow-up?
You stepped on me before.
Hey, okay, fine. No, I, I just wanted to ask, is it logical to assume that it's like a polo shirt or a t-shirt? You know, the term uniform can be misleading. I'm certainly wondering if, do they get matching shorts and shirts, or is it just a polo shirt?
I thought I heard that.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have the numbers on how many students would be impacted?
Four to eight.
Four to eight.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You realize...
Go ahead, Corey.
There's a third of the state is actually, is actually participating in that, state-wide, NHIAA. And this is new, by the way. It's only been, it's only been around in the state for a couple of years because it's a recognized sport. It's not been around for 10 years, only two years. So a third of the teachers in the state in future participate in bass fishing.
Any other comments or move the motion? Move the motion?
Move the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
One? All opposed? Corey is five. Okay, so that will not be added. Okay. JV golf, $4,208. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Corey. Discussion. I'm going to move the motion. All in favor? All opposed? Corey was four. Curriculum director, I'm sorry, administrative support, administrative support for curriculum director and business administration. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I will, okay, Corey will second, and I will speak first. As I have said, I have spent an amount of time upstairs with the superintendent during the day. I don't think I want to pay, and the business administrator or the curriculum coordinator to file or to write letters. I mean, one thing, drafting them, but to type them up and do things, and all the administrative support that comes with administrative support person. It is phenomenal to see them with the amount of work they do that I'm going to say is work that an administrative support person can take off their shoulders so that they can do the work we've hired them for. And, I mean, I've seen them working. It is, it is unbelievable. Any corporation, these people would be advanced, 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 because they are certainly
How many administrative assistants currently work upstairs?
We have, uh, there are a number of staff people, but actual administrative assistants who do the work that's outlined in the job description.
I mean, total administrative assistants upstairs?
We have one, Phyllis. She's an administrative assistant.
So who is everybody else?
We have a human resources person who focuses on the certification components and hiring. We have a payroll specialist who focuses on a very large job description, which frankly, we are revising, because it was changed at the end of last year, and Michelle and I both feel that there's a lot on her shoulders. So she makes sure that the paychecks are handled, and all of the different stipends and things within the district, as you can imagine, that's a, a big job, and that was added to her last year. And then we have a, an accounts payable person who handles all of the purchases, receipts, all the accounts payable information in the district. So I did ask Michael and Michelle to come up with a job description if they were to have an administrative support person, and I shared that with you today, I'm sorry, it was late, but it was shared with you. And there are, it's important to recognize, I said to Michelle, I said, well, there's thirty, thirty different things between the two of you that administrative support could do, but how do you quantify the hours for one of these thirty things? And the point is that it's very difficult to do, because for example, Mr. Tomell is spending a tremendous amount of time entering data into spreadsheets for our student data. In addition to that, he's also managing all of the pinnacle grade books, and any requests, support, issues with the grade books. Our hope is that if we had a good administrative assistant, that they would help him with those efforts, so that he's out working in the buildings with teachers and improving instruction. So right now, since we've worked together, Mr. Tomell and I have made a concerted effort to get out to the buildings, and we've been able to make it out a few times. And, and it's not for lack of trying, it really is, that, that he is working at it night and day to answer, Mr. Tomell, how many emails do you answer per day?
Between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty each day.
From staff? That alone is a huge job. So I, I just think that this, this, you can read the job description, I was really honestly, I stayed completely out of it because I wanted to objectively evaluate whether or not the job description, whether or not the position is warranted, and I have to tell you that my recommendation as a superintendent of schools is that this needs to be filled. It's, it's really a, a need.
I read the job description, it's very extensive, and I'm sure they could use the help, but I'm just wondering, rather than make this an employee with benefits, if this could be a staffed kind of outsourced kind of a position where people are subject to confidentiality, but we don't have to also pay benefits, because you're asking for fifty thousand, but there's another fifteen or twenty that's gonna go on top of that.
Just so you know, the fifty thousand included the benefits.
It did.
It did, yes.
Thank you.
And the level of training that we would have to provide someone for this position, it would be best to keep it in-house.
And my other question is, is there somebody in-house now that would want the extra income that would do this?
Well, I think...
Or is it just too many hours?
It's too many hours, yes. I have to, I have to just say that these are great questions, thank you for asking.
Okay, there's no, oops, sorry.
I've looked at other districts' administrative pages, and often they have 1.5 BAs, administrators working in their offices, one just to handle vendor proposals, so I don't think this is an unreasonable request for support.
And I have to agree with Dr. Brown. This is, I'm questioning, is one person going to be enough? I looked at this job description, I would hate to be the one that had to hold that job down. It's essentially a two-page description of work, and when I went to work as an engineer, I didn't have that much stuff to do. And I know that the assistants are overworked, they're definitely overpaid clerks, if that's what we're having them do. It's time that they have the assistance to bring our, well, we're here for one thing, to get the students trained correctly. And if our professional staff is having to do clerical work, we're wasting our time, wasting our money.
Move the motion?
Move the motion?
Move the motion?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous? All opposed? None? I forget the rule on that, but I believe you have to ask all...
You have to ask for a negative.
I forget the exact...
Or abstain.
Right. Okay. I believe we're at the point now where we can get a final number and a percentage.
The total of the additions that were going in the affirmative is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven, which brings the adjusted budget up to thirty-five million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand and sixty-six dollars. When compared to the current budget, that is a point nine-three percent increase for the current budget.
Okay.
I'm a little, okay, I'm a little closer, I have an addition of three hundred and twenty-seven
thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. You got it? I have a total of thirty-five million, two hundred and sixty-two, zero six six, sixty-six dollars, and I have a number of over, the present budget is a point nine-three percent So just to make sure everybody understands where we're at now, what happens now is we're gonna be taking a vote, ours the board, to recommend this to the budget committee. The budget committee will then, I'm sorry, okay, in a second, Corey, I just want to make sure I'm correct on this, the budget committee will then receive this, and they will do what the budget committee does. Should there be a difference, it is my intent and understanding, we would come together and see if we can negotiate any differences. If we cannot, I believe the law would then say that the budget committee would present after delivery of session their budget. The board would then direct me probably to present our budget. The people will then decide, they're the legislative body. So that's my understanding how it goes, does anybody disagree, even in the audience? No?
I want to talk about the student council.
Okay, all right, no problem, it's my understanding that's how it goes. All right, so, I would like to entertain a motion. Corey, did you have, I thought he said he had something to say but didn't want to say it.
No, I'd like to go ahead and discuss the student adjustment counselor, I'm curious about what happened to that, I'm curious about the networking switches, what happened there. I'm also curious about the middle, middle high school jobs.
Okay, can we start with the first one? Well, okay, I'm not sure if we do that now, to tell you the truth. I believe we're on the budget that was, we're on, I think before the board is these items here. All right, so I believe these are the items we discussed, because this is the motion, right? We have a motion to discuss these items, not the Jans ensemble and the other items. Does everybody agree with me on that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, point of information, on this sheet, it says other items to consider or explain. The NASDAQ study, thirty thousand.
I didn't, I didn't pay attention to that, so I would assume you are correct, and that...
We may want to discuss those.
Right, okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, so let me start before we go with yours, Corey.
Mr. Chairman, before you start, you have got those, those items are below the total line item for the budget.
I agree.
Those are not supposed to be discussed unless you intend to add them to the budget. Then you'll require a motion for each item to be transferred to the budget.
Well, I believe I am correct if I deal with the three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven, and then we could still add in these other items should we so choose. Would you agree with that statement?
Yes.
Anybody disagree? No?
I just have another question, are you, so are you saying that this is the only slate of items that we are able to discuss, adding to the budget, subtracting, there's no further, no further?
No, we will have further, but I am going to accept a motion for this amount now, then we will have, because if you notice, other items to be considered or explained...
I noticed the other items, but maybe there are other, it sounds like Corey at least has additional items that he would like to discuss, are you saying that we are restricting?
I agree, but the way I'm interpreting the budget, and if you disagree, that's fine, we were going to discuss these items on the budget. Yeah, good question, that is, I can go both ways on it, folks.
I thought we did these line by line, so, but there may be other... Right, so can't we then now just keep going, like you're, that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, that's fine with me. We'll just keep going.
I mean, we voted on these line by line, we don't need to vote on the budget again, we need to now keep going with other things people want to add or subtract, right?
So you're saying we should vote on the three twenty-seven?
No, I don't think we need to vote on it, because we already added all these.
We may add.
We already did all these, so now we know where we are now, and now we move on. Am I right?
No.
No, no.
For the next, I don't mean move on, I mean move on to the next thing.
But what, what you have to watch out for...
This is all brand new to us, folks, by the way, we've never done this before, so I am open enough to let everybody discuss their viewpoints.
What you have to do is you have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
And that's the budget.
Yes.
Now, if you're going to change anything on that motion, you have to amend the motion. So the next word that you should be hearing is that I would like to amend to cover these three items.
I, I agree and I don't agree, because what I believe the motion was, and I'm gonna ask Phyllis to read it back, to discuss the budget, which means these other items can be discussed.
You're right, at that point, you're right.
Okay, if you agree, you don't have to look it up. Go ahead.
Where does it say other items? I'm looking at the agenda.
After total, it says other items to be considered or explained, NASDAQ controls technology.
Oh, it's not on the agenda.
No, it's on this sheet, but it has to do with the budget, so we're discussing the budget.
I agree.
Yeah, no, I think we're gonna discuss that now, I, I think we're all in agreement on that. So, other items to be considered would be what you were talking about, Corey.
First, I admire my boss with the student adjustment counselor. I'd like to learn, just remind ourselves, you don't have to share any progress. What is the student adjustment counselor in the district? And now that I have students from athletics, what is this adjustment counselor in, what is that, how is that an acquisition?
You get the question?
Okay, so, just for clarification for the audience and the viewers at home, Mr. Mason is asking about the, the SAC counselor at the high school, and the acronym stands for, Mr. Stack, can you correct me if I'm wrong, is that student assistance counselor?
Assistant, it's my question.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure I have the correct terminology for the position, so that I can't see if Mr. Stack is still there, did he step out? No, no problem, I just want to make sure that we're using the correct terminology. The student assistance counselor is currently a grant-funded position, and it has been funded for, I believe, three years, Mr. Tomell?
Correct.
And at this time, the, we are hopeful to get grant funding for the position for one more year, but we have not heard a definitive answer yet from the organization that is funding that position. The administration recognizes that this is a very important position considering the opioid epidemic in the state of New Hampshire, and frankly, Commissioner Adleblu's clear message that mental health awareness is very important at our schools. Fifteen separate students have come forward this year with situations involving drugs and alcohol in our school that have required hearings by the central office for extended suspensions, and we had one situation that almost became an expulsion. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that, that we have, you know, we would like to see the position be grant-funded, but certainly with the addition of the 2.5 positions earlier today by the board, I believe that we can, should that position not be grant-funded, we can find the money to fund that later. I, I just think it's important to recognize that, that this is why a budget is a map. A budget is a map, we have to make decisions when it's time to make decisions, and I certainly continue to encourage everyone to balance the, the responsibility to the taxpayers with the needs of the students. I believe that we can handle this position through the budget as it stands after the additions this evening.
So if I read you correctly, based upon the two hundred and twenty-seven adjustment and the potential for the grant, that's why it's going to be a priority, sir?
Yeah, that is why that was not, the student assistance counselor is not included in the priorities brought forward from administration. It was not brought forward because we felt that we, we had it. These few other things here, we are looking at alternative funding sources to support the, this position and the other three things that are in the other items to consider or explain.
Can you, that this motion does not carry, does that remove the funding of this position moving forward?
Well, at this point, there is a motion in the sense that, that there's no motion to mount, I'm just simply responding to the, the question, but, but what I'm saying is that if we should not receive the grant funding, then we would work with the school board to find an alternate way to fund the position.
I would prefer to have security in knowing that position is funded, as an individual knowing the degree of importance of this position, and more related to the degree of impact to our community and the southern Rockingham area, New Hampshire in general areas of our area. So my point being, I'd rather feel secure in knowing this exists, and I'd rather feel secure as an individual knowing that if we didn't grant funding, we maybe reallocate the funds to reserve, does that make sense? Dr. Brown, do you?
I think you're trying to build in a hedge against the possibility of the grant being canceled.
Yeah, you can't do that.
I think, first of all, I don't think you can do that, but aside from that, at the beginning of this, I wrote down on my notes, that I think the term you used was we have room for all three of these items, or actually two of them, and then we have money for technology switches. So I think we're talking about something that we already know we can handle within the budget the superintendent has presented to us. There is no motion, I'm gonna call for motions on the three of them, if I don't get a motion, we'll move on, I don't want to restrict anybody from talking about them, but as I understand it, and I'm gonna reiterate, I believe you said we have room in the budget for the thirty thousand NASDAX, for the controls, that we have room in the budget for that, and we have the money for the technology switches of thirty thousand. Am I correct on that?
You would be correct that, that there, you know, we are not going to open school next year without the student assistance counselor. So we would have to work together as a team to use our budget, which is a map, to make a decision about how to best fund that. I, I just don't want, I want to be careful about using the term room, there's not a lot of room in the budget, but there is, there are, the board added 2.5 positions in tonight, if the grant doesn't come through, we may use some of that, those funds, but we could have a conversation as a team about what to do with that. The NASDAQ study and the technology switches, again, as I said at the beginning of the evening, there is a revolving fund for the facilities that could cover the technology switches, we don't know the cost of the climate controls today, I can't answer that, we don't have an estimate. So, yes, we could probably figure that out, and the NASDAQ study is something that I think that the group should discuss. Because I think that that, that kind, it's not that we couldn't quote, you know, we couldn't reallocate or move money from one account to another as a team to cover that, but I do think it's important for transparency's sake to be clear about the NASDAQ study. But right now, we're just discussing the student assistance counselor, and, and I would agree that, that, you know, if we don't get the grant, the administrative team did not put that on their list of six things.
I would make a motion, as in, on this student, the SAC position of sixty-two thousand dollars, you got that position?
Eighty-two, I think we budget eighty-two for open positions.
I'd like to go ahead and, I'd like to go ahead and sort eight thousand dollars into the FY nineteen budget for the state, make sure I can move forward.
Do I have a second? Failing a second, Corey, your motion does... Failing a second, Corey, your motion does not pass. Okay. No, that's okay. I mean, you know, okay. I guess what I want to know is, on these next three items... Well, let's go to the NASDAQ. Do I have a motion for the NASDAQ?
Move to approve 30,000 for the NASDAQ study.
Do I have a...
Is it, I'm sorry, is this for next year's budget?
Yes.
Motioning to add that money into the budget for next year? Don't we have the money to fund that from the Technology Revolving Fund?
No, that's, the NASDAQ study is the one for the, that we'd be looking at.
Okay.
Student enrollments, the facilities, yeah. What you're thinking of is the technology switches.
Right, but I thought, I'm pretty sure you, I thought I heard you say that you were gonna check again to see what could, how that fund could be used, whether...
If Mr. Baker had questioned whether or not that fund could be used to cover the NASDAQ, I would need to look at the language that was used when the fund was established to see if that qualifies or not. I know the technology piece qualifies because you recently purchased technology items through that.
I think it's N-E-S-D-A, N-E-S-D, not N-A-S-D, right?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What I'm wondering is, the purpose of that NASDAQ study would be for a long-term plan for our facilities.
There's more to it than that, but yes, that's a component.
But the "more to it", isn't that part of the facilities planning?
Again, I think that there's a likelihood, Mr. Baker, that those funds could be used for that.
Okay.
We just don't feel comfortable, we want to be transparent.
Right.
Right? And the reality is, is that we're funding a study. I left, I did not bring this up to the administrators.
Yeah.
The NASDAQ study, to me, is a board decision to get data to make informed decision about future budgets, facilities. And frankly, some really great questions that were asked during the 130-some-odd slides that we created this November regarding student enrollments and cost per pupil. So there really is a bigger picture to the NASDAQ study than just facilities. But that is a big component. And I think the thing that Mrs. Crotto and I were just wondering about is, we hadn't researched the answer to the specific question right now.
Sure.
So we don't want to answer it falsely and then have that held to us later.
If I could just add, I've not had an opportunity to locate the language that established that fund to be able to see what the intent was.
Right.
And whether or not this was funded or not.
We didn't even know when that fund was established?
I think that one was, it was either 2005 or 2007. I was able to call the Department of Revenue when they gave me information as to the origination date on several funds, so I don't recall if that one was one of the ones that they had.
I see.
So, again, it does take some time to locate the physical documents. But I don't have an opportunity to do that.
Is this something that could be split up? If part of it qualifies for the reserve fund, is the reserve revolving?
That particular fund is a revolving.
Revolving. So that part of it could be paid for by the revolving, if it doesn't 100% qualify?
Potentially.
Okay.
Good question.
I'm thinking that, and this is something that we could add anytime, right?
It is, except that once you set the bottom line of the budget, the bottom line's sent. I think that, I think, to be transparent with this, Jim, I put this on here to make sure that we discussed it because it's a board initiative.
Yeah.
I didn't want the administrators to put it through as an administrative recommendation because it's really not serving the students at their level.
Yeah.
I think this is a bigger-picture piece. And I think that, I'm very grateful for what the board has done this evening to support us in moving forward with our mission and vision. I think that, you know, even if you wanted to consider funding part of this, we could work out trying to find funds for the rest. But I think for transparency's sake, it's good to say to the community, we are paying this for this study. Right? Because we really, if you think about $30,000 in a $35 million budget, it's a very small sum of money that could potentially lead to a significant consolidation of resources and a big savings to the taxpayers later.
I totally agree that this is worth doing.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of what's the best way to finance it.
I think the best way to finance it is to add it to the budget and be very open about it, to be honest with you.
If I may, oh, okay.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to make sure I've got this right. You believe we have, you believe you don't, you have the money already?
I believe...
In this, in the budget. We have the money in the budget.
I believe wholeheartedly that we can take care of the climate controls and the technology switches.
Okay.
The only thing on this little list that I had left over, I didn't want to let the climate controls and the technology switches fall by the wayside because we spent a significant amount of time talking about them during the question and answer. So I thought it was fair to at least mention them. But I do think that the NASDAQ study is something that the board needs to debate funding.
Okay, now, if we don't put it in the budget, we can look at this a few months into the budget.
Yeah.
And then determine how the budget's going, if we have the funds.
We can do that with anything, yes.
So you're comfortable, I'm not, I want to ask you, are you comfortable now, and I think you've already answered the question, that yes, we have, we have the funds in this proposed budget? And given that we can go, you know, we could look at it September, October, and because it's a study, then we'd be more assured that, yes, we absolutely have the money, we can go forward. So we don't necessarily have to make the decision tonight to go put the 30,000 in. That's all I'm saying.
I'd rather make the decision...
No, no, that's fine. I just want to, I just get, try to give my two cents here, you know?
So this is such an important study, and the information, I think, is, you know, important that... I think it's important to have this information to inform us next year in our budget proceedings. I would, my feeling was, would be that I would prefer not to wait until next year.
No, that's fine.
I concur.
And do this study. I would, is there some way we can find the money to do that this year?
This year, right. No, that's fine.
I would agree that that would be really helpful to not only you, but us. Yeah, yeah, so I think that the question that you're asking now is, could we fund the NASDAQ study this year? Is that the...
That's my question.
Yeah, and I would have to ask Michelle, because I always ask her before I say yes to spending money.
I think as, you know, we get past this budget, this heavy budget process, we can certainly look at that. I feel fairly comfortable that we could find a way to fund this, but without doing a review, I wouldn't want to commit to that. And it's certainly something that can even be considered as we near the end of the year and look at what fund are available at the end of the year for a reserve fund balance if the board chose to use some of that.
The end of the calendar year or the fiscal year?
Fiscal year.
Okay, so that'd be in June that we could...
Certainly, we can take a look at where we stand and where we project to be at the end of this fiscal year, too.
If we could do that sooner, that would be, you know, I don't know about everybody else, but the sooner, the better, you know, I...
I'd like to get it going.
I think that in concert with, you know, investigating whether or not the revolving fund can be used to support that cost in whole or in part, is another avenue to pursue.
Now, the only question I have right now is, I don't believe we have a motion on this, am I right?
No, I just made the motion. I withdraw my motion.
Oh, you withdrew, okay.
You are?
I'd like to make a motion that we fund the NASDAQ study.
She just withdrew the motion, so now we have to have another motion. Want to make a motion?
I'm making a motion that we fund the NASDAQ study in this coming budget year. Right, the 1819 budget.
We're talking about adding it to the superintendent's, to what we've already added and taken up. But another $30,000 added.
I'll second that, so we can talk legally.
What we're saying, Corey, is this NASDAQ study for 30,000.
They're still talking.
Just as we added these other items, we're talking about adding additional 30,000 to this budget that would, for the 2018, 2019 year.
Was that your motion, Jim?
Yeah.
For next year. You want to add this for next year?
For the budget we're working on right now.
I think what, I think what Mr. Baker is saying is that in the event that we can't find the funds this year, he wants to ensure that it's available for next year. I think what Mrs. Crotto was saying is she feels comfortable that we can find the money. So I think, folks, yeah, this year.
And if we, if that's the case, then the money will go back to the taxpayers.
Exactly.
We have a, Corey, Karen?
So, this may be a dumb question, but when you order the study, do you pay them at the beginning or the end? And how long does it take? Because that would determine whether it's paid out of right now or this budget.
If you have, if I may speak, if you have a signed purchase order, you would encumber it.
So, meaning it would be coming out of right now?
Yep.
Even if it gets paid regardless of next year?
That's right, because you would encumber that money.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Oh, Corey, I'm sorry, go ahead. Corey, you're breaking up, and we didn't hear that further explanation. Corey, you're breaking up, and we can't hear anything you're saying.
All right, I...
I'm sorry. Okay, as I understand, okay, I'm just gonna try to recap this. As I understand it, you believe we can find the funds this year. So the question before us is...
With the caveat, I haven't done a full...
With the caveat, absolutely. So the question is, if we do it this year, we'll put on the agenda in the next week or two or whatever, funding this out of this year's budget. Or we can put it into next year's budget, and that's what we're gonna be voting on.
But even if we put it into next year's budget, if it gets funded out of this year's, I'm sure Jim can chat with a friend on the Budget Committee who then can take it out, because we won't be able to...
Correct. If the money is not spent, that money, that money pays down the tax rate next year.
This is just like an insurance policy basis.
Right.
We're hedging out that.
Yeah, so move the motion.
Fine with me. All in favor? Corey? Okay, all right, so all in favor is six. Corey is no. Climate controls, there is no amount there, but we had a lot of discussion about we have the money. Do I have a motion? Failure of a motion. Well, I mean, you can motion if you want, but we already discussed it so much that we know we have the money, but...
Let's leave it alone then.
I'm looking for a motion. Do we have a motion?
I've got a question.
I'll be more than happy to answer, ask a question.
The climate controls, we were gonna get a return on investment for that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're waiting for.
Okay.
We're waiting, Mr. Riley, have you heard anything yet? I know that you have been working hard on this.
I spoke with the manager that we're gonna utilize the fire pricing for the DTC controls, digital, direct digital control. And it's a lengthy process. It's a matter of going to each facility, which would be the middle school and the baking school, to take a look at the systems that are currently in place and controls that are currently in place and things like that. And coming up with initial costs to install, and then figure out the ROI for that. I'm still waiting on it, I apologize. It's a busy time of the year for themselves with the heating season upon us, so I do anticipate having it shorter.
Thank you. So, given that, I think we should just not...
Right, I think we're okay.
We're okay, so there's no motion on that. Technology switches, 30,000, again, using what you said, it appears we have that money.
Yep.
So do I have a motion? Lacking a motion? That one does not pass.
Sure.
Okay, so we're just, am I correct? To the 327, 737, we have added 30,000?
Yep.
Okay, so could you give us a number now?
Yes, so the total increase is 357,737 dollars, bringing the...
I'm sorry, I got confused. 357,000?
67, isn't it?
No, 357, 737.
357...
737.
737, thank you very much. Okay, and that is what percentage?
That is 1.01 percent. And the adjusted budget then is 35,292,066.
Okay. Corey, I believe you had, because it does say "other items to be considered or explained", I believe you had some items you wanted to discuss?
I think we've gone over them.
Okay, very good. Do we have any other items we would need to discuss on this? Yes.
So I had, I had asked a question regarding the school board's portion of the budget. There's a line item for dues at $10,000. And my question was whether we could, I would like to know what's included in that and sort of have an evaluation of the, like, ROI on the different subscriptions that we are paying and see if there's any, there are any that were, that are not of value that we could reduce that line item?
I can respond to that if you'd like.
Thank you.
There are, I think, three memberships listed in the budget book. I can recall two of them, I don't recall the title of the third, but it's the National School Boards Association, the School Boards Association, and there was one other one. I told the most recent actual costs that were paid, and it actually exceeds in total the budget that is requested slightly. So the total actual, most recent cost is greater than the budget request for next year.
The NSBA, the National School Board Association, is that something that is mandated or tied to our New Hampshire School Board Association membership? What do we receive for that? What's the value there? I know I get emails, but that's pretty much the only value I've seen so far. And do you know what portion of, like, what, do you know what the membership dues, what the amount is for that?
I have it, I don't recall it off the top of my head, but I do have it.
I did create a slide as an answer to your question in the, when I sent out the, let me just take a look at that.
I saw the answer, but I don't think...
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to make sure, I don't want to answer it. Yes, no, and sometimes it's nice to ask publicly so that we share the answer publicly, too. And I'm fine.
Please feel free, since you spend time researching.
Yeah, I just want to, I don't want to be incongruent accidentally, so...
All right. Am I correct, we can now accept a motion from someone for that 35,292,066?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'm sorry, were there other things you wanted to discuss?
This would, I mean, you know, depending on what the answers that come back, I would, I would move to, I could potentially move to reduce the budget by whatever the amount for some of these dues are, if they're of value.
We are going to be voting tonight to send this amount to the Budget Committee. So this is our chance. If you would like to make a motion, we can have that motion seconded maybe and discussed.
Hold mine back.
Yeah. Michelle, I don't think we got a second.
So I have, Pam just handed me, Dr. Brown just handed me an invoice for $2,700 for the NSBA, National Connection Fees, is that...
And that one is, that one is based on student enrollment. The School Board Association is, was 5,515. Part of that is for a policy subscription, and a portion of that's for dues. So 450 is policy subscription, and 5,065 is for dues. And then the other one was New England School Development Council. And that's 2,200. That's straight membership dues.
I'm gonna make a suggestion where we don't really know what these are. That is something you should look at, not necessarily, because, I hate to say this, but I'm gonna say it. It's $10,000. I think, you know, I belong to some of these organizations, I often wonder why the heck I've joined them. So I think that's something that we could look at 10, you know, next year. I realize it's 10,000, it's not like I want to say, ah, it's only 10 grand.
It sounds like we're, it's more than 10,000.
Right.
We're exceeding that line item, actually, it seems like.
So perhaps that's something we could have the superintendent look into as an action plan for next budget, because...
Or even, not even next budget, couldn't we just look into it? And then are we supposed to be talking to the Budget Committee? If we look into it...
Well, we're gonna be voting on a budget tonight to send to the Budget Committee.
Right, I get that, but it's still like, at the end of the day, it's a budget.
Information they could use.
Budget, right?
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I hadn't thought of that.
I'm just thinking if one out of three is useful, and we determine that... I'm just thinking if one out of three is useful, and we determine that, then, I mean-
I, I just couldn't figure a way that we would maybe possibly reduce 10,000 from this budget if we vote on sending the budget tonight to the budget committee. How do we then get it back and change it by 10,000?
Almost half of it is the New Hampshire School Board Association, right?
Right, right, which definitely, we're getting, absolutely. May I, may I just say quickly that, that the other thing that we can do is, we can leave this in the budget and then choose not to pay the subscriptions, and then give the money back to the taxpayers. So it's not, it's a, when you look at the tax impact, it's very small, but every $1,000 counts, right? Because when you have lots of little $1,000, it adds up a lot. So if we're not getting value out of one of those, we could probably stop paying for it sooner than later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Corey?
Yeah, the legal application from the New Hampshire School Board Association, or our member dues, supersedes the $5,000.
Absolutely.
By only, same amount of times you've called.
Yeah, we're, we're all in agreement on that.
I think we all agree with that.
I just think he couldn't hear.
Any further discussions on the budget? Could I have a motion? Whoops, sorry. Go ahead, Corey.
Can I make a summary of what the position test going down the line? Prior to line one was 260,000.
Okay, all right. Teaching position, 206,960. Paid for subs-
260 or 260?
26960. 2, 206, 960.
He has an email on this, unless you just want to read them.
Okay. Okay, are you, do you have this in the email?
I'm good now.
Okay, okay, good. I was going to say, the only thing we took out, okay. So, further discussions. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, the motion is to send to the school board, to send to the budget committee, a school board recommended budget of 35,292,066, which is a 1.01% increase over the present budget. Everybody okay with that recap? Okay?
Michelle, Peter.
I'm sorry?
Can I offer a-
Absolutely.
Friendly modification of the language to adopt a budget, that dollar amount for submission to the budget committee?
Sounds good. Could you word that for us? I'm going to withdraw, you're going to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw.
Would you, would you, would you suggest a motion to us?
That the motion be that the school board adopt a budget in the amount for fiscal year 19, in the amount of 35,292,066 for presentation or submission to the budget committee.
Second. So moved.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
You got it for us, all right? Okay. Any further discussion? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that. Go ahead.
So this budget is 206,000 more than I had hoped it would be. And I still think we can reduce positions as enrollment declines quite a bit more. But I will support it, but I'll work hard next year to work on VELAX with us.
I love VELAX, right?
Online teacher.
Did I just see a line in the sand?
Further discussion? All, I'm sorry?
I'd just like to say that when you divide the budget by the number of pupils that are projected, our cost per student is now at 22,000 per student.
Okay. All right. Further discussion? Having no further discussion, all in favor? That is unanimous. Okay. I know I've been short tonight. I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry I pulled rank, but I think it worked out all right in the end. Now, back to the agenda. We have a non-public, which is going to take maybe 30 seconds, and I'll explain to you, and I'm calling for it because there's a little switch, a little change or something. I believe that is everything on the agenda?
Point of order. Board stipend, 6.4.
Oh, thank you very much. We have a question with Legal at the School Board Association about that. My concern was that even though it was not budgeted, I believe that there was at one time a warrant article or a vote to pay the school board members $1,000. Because we didn't put it in the budget, I'm concerned that if it was a warrant article, are we now putting ourselves in a position of not paying a salary that is due or something in lieu of salary, and therefore would open ourselves up to litigation? I don't know. I thought we'd have the answer back. We don't have it back yet. I think it's, it's just a minutia thing, but we have to make sure in today's society that we don't open ourselves up to something. You know, rule number one, right? Cover your own, yes. Okay. Next meeting, okay, I don't know, next meeting agenda? Anybody have anything for next meeting agenda? Tom and I will get together on that.
The NASDEX study.
The, the, okay. Okay, the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held Wednesday, December 20th, 2017, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School, 17 Danville Road. Budget committee meeting will be on Thursday, December 7th. That's an interesting day, for those of no, you who don't know, December 7th, Labor Day. It's at 7:00 PM in the library of Sanborn Regional School Board, not School, yeah, here. Okay. We do have a non-public very quickly, and then we will adjourn. Do I have a motion to go into non-public?
I have to read the-
So moved and seconded by?
You have to read the actual RSA.
Moved by Taryn, seconded by?
You have to read that.
Non-public RSA.
Oh, okay.
Under RSA, not-
Please, I don't want to go through your call.
To A C D.
Okay. Tammy made that motion. Taryn, you seconding it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, Larry, you in favor?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, Corey?
Yes.
Okay.